Test them, one, two, three. All right.
All right, you good to go to start?
All right. Ease on down, ease on down the road. Just getting my voice ready. No. What you and you? Which way? Get right here. Come on up. Right here, I want to make sure y'all not behind me. All right. First of all, on behalf of the City of Colleen, we would like to thank you for taking out your schedule to be here today. The City of Colleen proudly recognized Martin and Antonio Tabera for dedicating themselves to help and keep our city beautiful. Their 12 cleaning activities at Andy K. Wells Hike and Bike Trail collected over 750 pounds of garbage. Your commitment and dedication to keeping Colleen beautiful has not gone unnoticed and provides a great model of service for others, of the families and individuals to follow. Thank you for your invaluable service and volunteerism. Debbie Nash King, Mayor, December 3, 2024. Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your service.
Sora?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Anything you'd like to say? Well, anyhow, we're a community that's pretty wide. And we ensure that all residents can be involved in cleaning their neighbors. And we also have a very open and happy organization that's hands for who can adopt the road. And once they adopt that road, they're responsible for cleaning it up. So we thank you for being one of the individuals that took out the time to make a difference in our parks. Thank you. Thank you.
Where would you recommend us to clean?
Oh, that's nice. Well, we do have areas in the city, like the biggest areas, that we do have a crew. The city council just voted to have a six-member litter team, and it's their responsibility to ride through the city and pick up any trash or garbage that may be left behind by residents. So whatever area you want to do, just let us know, and we can help you out with some trash bags. And maybe you can get your friends to join and other people. But for this, we truly recognize you for your outstanding dedication to our city, along with your father. We thank you because you have made a tremendous difference in keeping our city beautiful. Thank you. Mr. Sean Price. Sean Price? Oh, sir, can you see the city secretary real quick for some clarification? Good afternoon, everyone, once again. I am calling the 3 o'clock meeting to order. Thank you all for taking out of your busy schedule to be here. We will have the invocation by Mr. Don Smith and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Alvarez. Would you all please stand?
Lord, thank you for all you do for us. We need to go to the Lord with thanks, even in times when we are not requesting something. Lord, the city council has a hard job. Lord, give them the guidance and strength to develop solutions to difficult problems. And let us civilians support our council in developing these solutions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez and also Mr. Smith, for the invocation. For individuals that may be new to the council meeting, please mute all your phones on silence. If you would like to take a call, you can take it outside. Also, when an individual is speaking that has been acknowledged, we will give him or her the respect to listen and not to interfere while they are talking. With that being said, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Oh, Councilmember Adams?
I second.
All right, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Let the record show that Councilmember Zegura is absent. Did all councilmember vote? Motion carries six to zero. Presentations. Counsel, you have three times to speak, three times each. Madam Secretary.
PR 24-026, Oath of Office for the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Youth Advisory Commissioners.
Good afternoon, out there, State Council. If we can have a 2024-2025 Youth Advisory Council. Committee members, please step forward.
Thank you. It is indeed an honor and pleasure to stand here before you. I am so proud of you for taking the time and the effort to go through the interview process. And I know some of those questions was hard, but you are not only our future for today, you are our future for tomorrow. And I'd like to personally thank all your parents for your hard effort and time that you put in with your youth that's standing before. This is what it's all about. I always had a saying that you're part of a problem and part of a solution. This is our solution, volunteerism. So if you want to get involved with the city, please take the opportunity to sign up to be a volunteer because we need you just as much as you need us. With that being said, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I repeat your name. You have to speak up loud. Hold your hand, raise your hand up. Everybody hand up? All right, let's try that again. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Youth Advisory Commission Member, Youth Advisory Commission Member of the City of Colleen, of the state of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. Before we take our picture, we do have their advisor here and also our park and director. I'd be remiss if I don't give them the opportunity to speak. Sir, ma'am?
Good afternoon, and thank you all for your dedication and service at such a young age. This is truly an outstanding opportunity, and we look forward to working with you and have all the great ideas that you will come up to benefit the youth of Colleen as well as the city of Colleen. You are an asset to our city, and it's great to have you.
Would you like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
All I have to say to you guys is that being able to come into this program and see how much you all have grown and the ideas that you have all brought forward, it makes me very excited for what this program is going to continue turning into and moving forward with. So congratulations.
You guys fill in the middle. Brett is going to arrange everyone. And Karen, she can take a photo as well.
Can everyone see my camera? All right. On three, one, two, three. And another. One, two, three.
Madam Secretary.
PH 24-029, Colleen Star Award.
Thank you all. Once again, it's good to be in front of you. You know, tonight is a great night. It's all about volunteering, giving back to the community. And this next award is called the Star Award, and it's very important. You saw our Youth Advisory Commissions as they came up, and they shine bright. But then we have an adults that's in our community. We have groups, we have organizations, and we just have individual people. At 2 o'clock today, I gave an award to a father and son who went out to Andy K. Wells Park, and that's all they do is clean it up and make sure it's beautiful. So volunteerism is important to the City of Colleen. And the next individual that Councilmember Boyd will be recognizing is an individual that deserved the Star Award. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to everyone that's here, those who are watching. If I could, I'm going to ask Mr. Tyrone McLaurin to come forward, and I'm going to present the Star Award. I will be presenting it, actually, in honor of his late wife. Mr. McLaurin and his wife, over the decades, have done so much behind the scenes to contribute to this great city. Strong believers of the city, strong believers of young people, and taking care of business behind the scenes. I had the opportunity to present this award last year, and it was just, it didn't work out in the timing. And so this is just the proper time to do it. So I'm going to read a little bit about Ms. Betty Ann McLaurin so that we know who this person is, who's very deserving of this reward. Betty Ann McLaurin's life was a beacon of service, dedication, and unwavering commitment to her community and country. A proud graduate of Charleston State University with a bachelor's degree in social work, Betty also held a master's of arts in clinical pastoring from the American Theological Seminary. Her educational accomplishments were just one facet of a life dedicated to excellence and purpose. As a decorated Army veteran, Betty has exemplified the highest ideals of service and sacrifice. Her distinguished military career was honored with numerous accolades, including the Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Service Ribbon, National Defense Service Medal, Marksmanship Rifle Badge, NCO Professional Development Ribbon, and Driver and Mechanic Badge. These awards reflect her discipline, resilience, and commitment to our country. Betty's entrepreneurial spirit and vision left an indelible mark on the City of Colleen. After her military service, she founded and operated a childcare development center for over a decade, providing essential services to local families. Her journey continued as she co-founded Solution One Industries, Inc., a leading logistics and engineering firm headquartered in Colleen with national reach. Through her leadership, Betty helped shape an organization that embodies her values of integrity, innovation, and hard work. Betty's passion for empowering others extends far beyond her professional achievements. She was a devoted mentor and philanthropist, dedicated her time and resources to uplift those around her, an active member of numerous nonprofit organizations, including the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Texas and the Erica White Foundation. Betty exemplified selflessness and generosity. She also founded the Branch Foundation, an initiative close to her heart which supported teenage mothers by providing them with resources and opportunities for a brighter future. Betty Ann McLaurin's legacy is one of profound impact and inspiration. Her dedication to her family, community, and country serves as a model for all who knew her. Today, we honor her life, her achievements, and countless lives she touched. Her memory will forever remain a source of inspiration, reminding us of the power of service, compassion, and unwavering determination. That's who the late Betty Ann McLaurin was, powerful, impacting person. And I am grateful and blessed to present this award to you for her. So on behalf of the City of Colleen, we present the I can get it together here. On behalf of the City of Colleen, we present the Colleen Star Award.
Well, first of all, I wanted to say I might give an honor to God for all that he had done, right? And I just want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and the distinguished council for this award. I know as from a standpoint, if you knew who Betty was from a standpoint, those that didn't know, she was always in the background, right? She never wanted to defend fair. And her commitment was always to her community and her family who she loved, right? And I just want to say that I'm forever grateful to have had the opportunity to serve with her in this life, right? And as we continue to serve the city and the community, we're just honored to be here. So we just want to thank the community for this award. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Boyd, and for that honor and for the Star Award. That was really nice. Thank you. Counsel, we have Judge Krishna here. So Counsel, PR-24-034, I would like to move it down until Judge Krishna get here. He had told me earlier that he had court and it may run over. So is that okay, Counsel? Yes, yes, yes. All right. And let the record show that Councilmember Zegura is present. With that being said, Madam Secretary, discussion item.
DS 24-072, Semiannual Capital Improvement Advisory Committee Report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Zegars.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. So we are here to submit to the council the semiannual report from the SEAC Committee. And so roll just what the SEAC Committee is. It's a committee that is required by the city to have because we implemented impact fees. So it is tied to Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code. So the roles of the SEAC, our Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, is to monitor and evaluate implementation of our capital improvement plan specifically to the water and sewer, file semiannual reports with respect to the progress of the capital improvement plan, and any recommendations perceived inequities in implementing the plan and imposing the impact fees. And then advise city council for the need to update or revise sorry, there's spelling error there, the land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and the impact fees. So the current capital improvement plan that we have, again, we're specifically focusing on water and sewer. It provides the strategy in upgrading, expanding our water and sewer mains, our infrastructure, as to addressing deficiencies or the needs as it relates to growth. The city current plan was done in 2019. We're actually working on developing a new one right now with Fries and Nichols. We have a draft, and then we're looking at bringing that to council early next year as we adopt the final one. And so, again, as this relates, and this whole purpose we're having this is in regard to impact fees. And the impact fees are tied to cost recovery, ways to provide a funding source for this infrastructure, and it is based on a 10-year planning window. So the current plan, and this is one from 2019, there are 13 water projects and 12 wastewater projects that are tied to the impact fees. And they're determined to be eligible based on the past study. And again, they're eligible for that 10-year period. The city's wastewater impact fee capital improvement plan recoverable costs as based on the study is $19,486,810 for the water projects and $7,1,703 for the sanitary sewer projects. And then after depth services added to the let's see, so again, these are slides we presented. When we look at the reduction, so impact fees cannot pay for 100% of the project. They are only eligible for 50% of those projects. So that's why we have to have those depth services, those wastewater sanitary sewer bonds that we normally do to get to the remainder of those projects. We're looking at a total of the recoverable costs through impact fees as $11,984,308 for the water projects, $4,306,049 for the sewer projects. And again, those are the ones, that's the amount that we can recover through the impact fees that we collect. And then this is the plan from 2019 of where those water projects were that were approved that we are tied to those impact fees. So you have kind of the southeast corner or southwest over there near Clear Creek. We've got the 195 Chaparral Water Line and Sewer Line Projects. We have, this is all water, so there's a water main that goes from the tower. We have the pump station, the tower, the main that goes down Chaparral and goes up 195. And then we have a little bit up on the northeast corner as well. And then this is the list of all the projects that were represented in the previous slide. And then kind of shows the status where we have completed several of them. Some, number six and seven and eight, or six and seven were still under design. And then eight, the pump station is actually under construction right now over there by Chaparral, right by that water tower. We're at a point now where we've actually expensed a lot of the bond money. So we're reviewing this. A lot of these projects, the ones we haven't completed are being part of the new capital plan. And then once we do that, we're going to reassess the impact fees. And then on the sewer projects, this is kind of shows where all the sewer line, the new sewer lines were being done. A couple of lift stations were also being added. And if you look specifically, like the one on six, that was the most recent one. That was tied to the middle school. Or the middle school actually paid and reimbursed the city a lot of that cost to get that project in. And then number 12, number 12 is actually on Tremere. That is converting the force main to a gravity sewer, and that actually helps provide sewer to the new fire station. And then we have a couple of the other little projects. Those, this is the ones that are listed. The ones on no activity is pretty much the ones that we don't have enough money on the bond. So we're kind of on a holding pattern on that until we come back for looking at some new a new water and sewer utility bond next year. And then kind of shows which ones we completed and then which ones are on construction. So obviously, number 12 was the one I mentioned. That one's really tied to the fire station. And then impact fees collected. This kind of shows a summary of how many, how much of the impact fees we have collected throughout pretty much the last year since October 2023. 2023, we were pretty low. We weren't collecting a whole lot of impact fees because of the amount of permits and developments. We weren't getting a lot in. It's kind of rebounded. And then really, in this year, in '24, you can kind of see where those funds and those amounts collected have started to increase. And that's a little bit more of what we were expecting when we implemented the impact fees. And then right now, showing a fund balance, we have a fund balance extra for water. Our wastewater is negative, but with the collections and as we move forward, we'll be able to get that. Hopefully, within the next year, we'll be back to zero and then start collecting more and working towards projects and implementing them with the new projects on the new plan. And then as we finished our SEAC meeting with the committee, we had a couple other topics that they wanted to discuss in our next one. So obviously, we're going to be having the next meeting will be around February when we finalize our master plan. So they can have a review, have any comments, any recommendations they can present to council. But in addition, they want a discussion on impact fees. They wanted a better understanding of what they're about, what are the restrictions, what are we able to use it for? And then also tied into finding of capital projects. And then, again, we're going to review the master plan. So that will be the kind of the discussion and topics for our next meeting. And then with this, we are actually just presenting, as required, we're submitting to council the report from the SEAC Committee.
Thank you, Ms. DeAndrea Zegars. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one question. Money in parentheses kind of stand out to me.
Yeah.
Can you explain that one?
So obviously, we haven't been collecting as much as we needed. When we implemented the impact fees, we had a kind of a proposed, kind of that expectations of what development with the, as we're bringing in, how much funds we're going to be expecting. We weren't collecting a lot of them, so we have an excess, or actually, we had a little, you know, beyond, you know, we expected and spent more towards sewer projects than we had. So right now, that fund balance is zero, but it is getting replenished as we get the impact fees.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Zegar, thank you, and that's why you made it to point out to the council that you will be relooking at fees, maintenance fees.
Yes, yes, once we get the new plan, we will then have to come back and look at that.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Work session. Counsel, you have three minutes to speak three times each. Discuss agenda items five through fifteen for the December third, two thousand twenty-four regular session. No final actions until the regular section. Madam Secretary.
L M N twenty-four zero two eight, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of November fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
R S twenty-four two one five, consider a memorandum resolution appointing commissioners to the Youth Advisory Commission for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and welcome back, Mr. Murphy.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Thank you for having me back. I get the pleasure of being here to address appointing commissioners to our Youth Advisory Commission. Just a little background, the Youth Advisory Commission was created in nineteen ninety-three to serve as a liaison to the Colleen City Council. YAC is comprised of up to thirty-seven commissioners and unlimited resource and junior members. FY twenty-four activities included leaders in training, youth conference, terror day, off the record, and the yearly T M L summit. YAC goals include communicating with local government on current issues affecting youth, providing leadership, growth, and development, involving and engaging youth in alcohol and drug-free networking activities, providing volunteer opportunities to create a sense of community and environment awareness. The mission statement is to provide the youth of our community opportunities through volunteerism and service by taking initiatives that are directed towards effective change. City council makes appointments to YAC as vacancies occur. Four students are recommended to serve as commissioners for the middle of the FY twenty-five based on their leadership ability and community involvement. The recommended commissioner appointees are Ms. Brianna Trevino, Ms. Adriana Lopez-Espanosa, Mr. Derek Ortiz-Marcano, and Mr. Naya Black. The recommendation from, the recreation is staff recommends appointment for the nominations of the Youth Advisory Committee for FY twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. There are no questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
R S twenty-four two one six, consider a memorandum resolution purchasing new multimedia equipment to upgrade council chamber from Rush Works Inc. in the amount of one hundred sixteen thousand sixty-five dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Thank you and your staff for helping out earlier with the YAC commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. Hello to Madam Mayor and Counsel. In two thousand nineteen, we moved into this beautiful chamber, and we got equipment from Rush Works, now Inc., which is in our control room up there with Francisco and Jesse right now. All parties agree that an upgrade is now necessary with the multimedia technology and equipment because for technology, five years is aging, considered aging. The upgrade will improve the viewer experience, user quality, and sound, video, and display equipment. The upgrade will add to and maintain modern meeting and management controls, integrate new technology with existing systems, and ensure continued compliance with accessibility standards. Equipment upgrades will include most things that are in the control room, the servers, the switches, the camera sound mixer, audio visual, visual technology, keyboard, mouse, everything that's in that control room, basically. The need for expansion is due to larger capacity in physical and internal server space as well as equipment that is outdated. The project will be fully funded with our PEG funds, that's the Public Educational and Government Television Funds, and all council meetings are now broadcast live and recorded on the PEG channel, cable channel ten, and it airs twenty-four seven, and that's not just the council meetings, but lots of other informational content. The current vendor has proven to be highly qualified with extensive experience and a successful performance record, so staff does recommend that the city council approves the procurement of the multimedia equipment for one hundred and sixteen thousand and sixty-five dollars. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. There are no questions.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
R S twenty-four two one seven, consider a memorandum resolution approving support addendum number three with RouteWare Incorporated to continue providing route optimization tracking for the city of Colleen's solid waste fleet in the amount of eighty-six thousand forty-eight dollars.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reynolds. Counsel, Mr. Reynolds have two items on the agenda this afternoon.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Most, most, for the fleets that are delivery service fleets, whether it be municipal or commercial, private firm, they have some type of route optimization attached to their, their vehicles to make sure they're servicing the customers to the highest ability. This right here is basically, we've been in a contract with RouteWare since two thousand fifteen. We want to continue that contract with RouteWare, so I'll go through the presentation and entertain the question at the end. RouteWare is an optimization system that increases driver productivity, accountability, and safety, all while helping to reduce costs. In two thousand fifteen, the city began using RouteWare to optimize its solid waste pickup routes. What it does is allow solid waste trucks to track addresses on each route to be serviced. This is especially important when we hire new drivers that don't have experience with the solid waste routes. This allows them to not miss services for their customers. It allows drivers to take pictures, so if we have missed services, somebody don't have a container out, it takes a picture, helps us with the dispute process when it comes into our, to our customer service reps. This works on both sides. Sometimes we do have driver mistakes, where drivers do skip or miss services. This helps the customer dispute that as well, so it works on both sides of that. And provide staff, office staff with the access of drivers' routes and live updates that addresses customer concerns. RouteWare has a contract through the H G A C, Houston Galveston Area Council, contract number F L zero three twenty-one, and this is for a five-year service support commitment. The annual services and support maintenance agreements costs are as follow. This is down for the next five years. As I stated, we are very pleased with the service that RouteWare has provided, and we would like to continue this service. We have three alternatives. Staff recommends the alternative three, which is to authorize the city manager or his designated need to execute the RouteWare Support Addendum number three for services and support from January first, two thousand twenty-five, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. And authorize the city manager or his designated need to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law, and I'm here for any questions you may have about this item.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
R S twenty-four two one eight, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with One Twenty Water Incorporated for lead and copper inventory and testing services in the amount of fifty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. All right, yes, let me give you a little background just before we go into the presentation. Safe Drinking Water Act was originally passed by Congress in nineteen seventy-four to protect the health and safety of the nation's public water supply services systems. In nineteen eighty-six, this law was amended, banning the use of pipe, solder, flux, and fittings containing greater than eight percent lead. So it was amended to restrict those rules a little bit more. In nineteen ninety-six, the law was amended once again. At this time, it reduced the acceptable levels from eight percent to point two five percent. The lead and copper rule that we're going to be discussing tonight, in nineteen ninety-one, the lead and copper rule was established, it was published by the EPA to minimize lead and copper in drinking water. The United States, this is a United States federal regulation that limits the concentration of lead and copper allowed in the public water drinking systems. In two thousand twenty-one, the lead and copper rule was revised and was released to the public for review and comments by state and local entities, at which time we were informed of requirements to develop an inventory of service lines within our distribution system and have this service, this inventory completed and submitted to the T C Q by October sixteenth of this year, two thousand twenty-four. Going into the presentation, on October the second, two thousand twenty-four, the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, announced a final, a final lead and copper rule improvements requiring water systems to identify and replace lead pipes within ten years. In FY twenty-four, the city of Colleen partnered with One Twenty Water to complete the EPA-mandated lead service line inventory and to assist with customer notifications. What happens when we do the inventory, we had the inventory on both sides of the line, the city side, which leads up to the meter, as well as the customer side that leads from the meter to the home. So during this inventory, we enlisted the help of this third-party company who specializes in this type inventory to help us out. All public water systems were required to submit an inventory, as I stated earlier, by October sixteenth of this year. The city of Colleen, we submitted ours on October fifteenth of this year, meeting the deadline set by state law, by federal law. The city confirmed that there was no lead service lines are in use within the water distribution system on the city side, meaning that when we did the inventory, there was no lead lines found on the city side. The EPA requires notification to customers within thirty days of completion of this inventory that they have galvanized lead or unidentified service lines. And we wrote that as galvanized lead or unidentified lines because that's the way it's written in the rule. We ruled out through our inspection with One Twenty Water that there are no lead or unidentified lines in our system on our side or on the, on the private side, on the customer side. We only have galvanized lines out there, and there was two thousand five hundred and twelve residents that currently have galvanized lines. So as stated in the previous bullet, we have a requirement to notify those residents of their, those lines that need to be replaced. We have, in partnership with One Twenty Water, all of the customer, all twenty-five hundred and twelve mail-offs was done prior to the October sixteenth date. The notifications were sent out via mail. The notifications are there. There's the One Twenty Water will continue to follow up with those notifications. They will also continue to do lead and copper sampling for us going forward. So this is what this contract is about, and this is what it does, and this is a federally mandated contract that we have to have, well, it's a federally mandated rule that we have to meet. This company just allows us to help do that. We don't have staffing to go out and do these type of inventories on our own, so we enlisted the help of a third-party company that specialized, as most cities are doing. Okay? Also, before we get to this recommendation, I do want to highlight the fact that Mr. Wiley, who's here with me today, water sewer manager and his staff, has maintained a superior water rating with the T C Q since two thousand nineteen, and we still maintain that rating because we are meeting these mandates and reporting things as we're required to do. So we recommend that the city council authorize the city manager or his designated need to execute a letter of agreement with One Twenty Water for two, for the two hundred, two thousand twenty-five lead and copper sampling event, required, requiring schools, childcare facilities, sampling, and all communication requirements in the amount of fifty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. There is no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
R S twenty-four two one nine, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a proposal to purchase an airfield lighting control and monitoring system at Robert Gray Army Airfield under the intergovernmental support agreement with Fort Cabasos in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Provost.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager. This is the purchase of an airfield lighting control and monitoring system at Argath under the I G S A that we recently signed back in October. On June eighteenth, the city council approved a resolution allowing the city of Colleen to enter, enter government service agreement with Fort Cabasos to provide new and expanded airfield maintenance services for Robert Gray Army Airfield and Yocumnefray Army Helport. The I G S A became effective one October of this year. Under the I G S A, Fort Cabasos DPW is contracting with the city of Colleen Aviation Department to purchase, install, and maintain a new airfield lighting control and monitoring system, also known as the A L C M S. Fort Cabasos is funding the entire project in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars as a part of its commitment to ensuring reliable and efficient airfield operations. The A L C M S manages the airfield's critical lighting infrastructure, including runway and taxiway lights, approach lights, and apron lighting. The system provides centralized control and monitoring, allowing operators to adjust lighting levels based on visibility conditions and real-time operational needs, ensuring safe and efficient airfield operations. The existing A L M C S is outdated and manufacturer no longer provides support. The system has become increasingly unreliable, requiring frequent manual interventions by staff. Temper and band-aid fixes are being made, are being applied to maintain functionality, but this approach is inefficient and not sustainable long term. The ongoing degradation of the system proposes significant operational risks and could compromise airfield safety and efficiency without proper upgrade. The objective is to replace the outdated A L C M S with a modern, fully supportive system that enhances reliability, safety, and operational efficiency. The new system will provide seamless lighting control, real-time monitoring, and the flexibility to adapt to varying conditions. Through the I G S A partnership, the city of Colleen Aviation Department will manage the bidding, purchase, installation, and ongoing maintenance of the new A L M C M S. With Fort Cabasos funding the new project, this collaborative effort will ensure both military and civilian airfield operations are supported by the state-of-the-art infrastructure. And the recommendation, and staff recommends the city council authorize the purchase of the A L M C M S at Robert Gray Army Airfield in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars, and that the city manager doesn't need be authorized to execute any and all contract documents in accordance with state and local law. Pending any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Provost and Director Wilson and your staff for that great, amazing, strong relationship with Fort Cabasos. These other kind of partnerships will be a lifelong relationship because of you and your staff. Thank you for that. Madam Secretary.
R S twenty-four two two zero, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a contract amendment with Shibe Consulting LLC for the Drainage Master Plan Project in the amount of sixty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you, Counsel. As you know, this will be Mr. Rebell's last meeting. He has the next five items. Good afternoon, Mr. Rebell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Mayor Protem and City Council. The first item is an amendment to an existing contract that we have with Shibe Consulting. We are seeking this amendment that will allow for a FEMA study to be done in the vicinity of Rosewood Drive along Acorn Creek. This is being done to really support the city's efforts as well as to support the effort associated with Hudson at Colleen Apartments Complex. As you, you all recall, a couple of months back, you all had looked at the zoning associated with that property. One of the conditions, well, it wasn't associated with the zoning, but one emotion of direction was that they had to do a flood study. And so they are going to do their flood study, but their flood study is different from this effort. This effort is just basically updating the flooding, the flood models to existing conditions. And so this is what this is doing here. As shown on the last bullet, things have changed since the construction that was done by Tech Dot, as well as development in that vicinity. And so this, again, contract will allow our existing contractor, Shibe Consulting, to actually make adjustments to the flood model such that it's updated to current conditions. What, what Emsbury Company will do, they're offering to pay for half of the cost, but as soon as they get this information, they're going to use this information in order to put their project, their proposed project on in the model, and then make their own submission. So again, this will allow us to update the model. This is actually was going to be a part of our phase two of the, of our study Drainage Master Plan update, but, but we saw this opportunity to go ahead and advance this, and since they're willing to pay for half of the cost, we thought it was a good opportunity to share with this council. This, again, shows you the study location. So again, Acorn Creek is here, so the study will be along here, and then just off the map, probably right there is where Rosewood Drive crosses Acorn Creek. And that study will be to update all of the information pretty much in this drainage basin, and it's probably a bit wider than that, but that, that's the general thought there. Staff has recommended that council authorize the execution of this amendment. Again, it would be for sixty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, and that would basically increase the existing contract with Shibe that is with Shabi that is existing at $360,000, so it would increase that $360,000 contract by $62,810. I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have, and also Mr. Andrew Zager, our city engineer, is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell and your staff for taking advantage of that opportunity that they would go have in with us. Thank you for that. Madam Secretary.
PH 24047, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Ian Holdings LLC on behalf of Arcade News Incorporated, case number Z 2427, to rezone approximately one acre out of Lot 1, Block 1, West Side Commercial Subdivision from Cup Community Unit Plan with B3 Local Business District uses to B4 Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 2200 West Central Texas Expressway, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Rebell.
Yes, ma'am. This is request to rezone property that's currently located at 2200 West Central Texas Expressway from Community Unit Plan with a B3 underlying base zoning to B4 uses. The intent of this request is, as noted on the last sentence of the slide, this will allow the applicant to use the existing building on the property and as a car rental business. The star on the map shows the approximate location. This is just off of Willow Springs Road, as you see on the map, intersection of Willow Springs Road and CTE. There's the subject property looking north, looking south. That's actually a picture of the building that's on the property. I think it was an old bank building, credit union building, something like that. This is in the neighborhood infield growth sector, so that's where we want development to happen. There's a building there, and it's vacant, and here's an opportunity for it to be utilized for business purposes. So makes a lot of sense, consistent with the growth sector plan and intentions. It's also consistent with the regional commercial plan, as you saw, it's on the corner lot, and, you know, on major thoroughflers. And so it's consistent with the regional commercial designation. It furthers all of the comp plan implementation efforts as listed. There is sufficient water sewer and drainage. Also, ingress and egress is sufficient. There is not a need for a traffic impact analysis for this particular project. No parkland dedication requirements because this is a commercially zoned property, and parkland dedication is increasing residential intensity. And then also, it's not located in a national wetlands or a city-regulated floodplain. All notifications have been accomplished to date. Staff has received no written response in opposition to the request. That shows the extent of the notification. Staff is recommending approval of this request, meeting all comp plan requirements consistent with community character and the recommendations of the comp plan. Again, we're recommending that the property be rezoned from Community Unit Plan with B3 designation uses to B4. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case on October 14th and voted by a vote of five to zero to recommend approval of this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
PH 24048, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z 2428, to rezone part of Lot 3, Block 55, Colleen Original Edition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 113 West Avenue B, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Rebell.
Yes, ma'am. So this is a part of the city-wide, city-initiated rezoning request, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. You all already know the intent of this. These are properties that need correction so that they have the right zoning designation so they line up with, with the comp plan. And this is what this allows for this property that's located at 113 West Avenue V. When, if this is approved, this will bring the total number of properties that this council has rezoned as a part of this program to 105 properties. Again, that's very significant because on average, you're saving the property only anywhere from $500 to $1,000 in costs. And I'm sure there would be some time savings as well. So I'm going to keep moving. Staff is recommending approval that this property be rezoned from B5 to R1 as it is, as it is currently a single-family residential property. Planning and Zoning Commission heard this, and they voted to recommend approval by a vote of five to zero.
Counsel, thank you. Counselor Mr. Gar.
I was just curious, Mr. Rebell. I know that when we had that presentation, there was a couple of property owners that brought this up.
Yes, sir.
But the rest of these owners, are we as a city notifying them?
Yes, sir.
What's going on, and they understand why?
Yes, sir.
And all of that, because I know the challenge was financing.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
Yes, sir. So we've, we've modified our rezoning process, and we've added, for these specifically, what we've, we send a direct notification to these affected property owners. And basically, what we do is it's a notification that basically says opt out.
Got it.
So, and that's the way we do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Secretary.
PH 24050, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Quintero Engineering on behalf of Fanix Properties LLC, case number Z 2430, to rezone approximately 12.033 acres out of the John Essery Survey, abstract number 296561611714 through 71611714 through 1911, and the M Tongate Survey, abstract number 832775-3 from R1 Single Family Residential District and RMH Residential Mobile Home District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 3210 Florence Road, Colleen, Texas. Requires a three-fourth majority vote.
Thank you. Just for the record, this is PH-24-048. Mr. Rebell. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. This request to rezone property that is located at 3210 Florence Road from existing destination of Single Family Residential and Residential Mobile Home District to Two-Family Residential. The request is being made because there is a desire to build and construct two-family residential properties on this, or structures or units on this site. It is important to note that per the International Fire Codes, for this particular case, you cannot exceed 30 dwelling units. Or if you do exceed 30 dwelling units, you got to have two access points, and they've got to be a certain distance apart. For this particular situation here, they, the, the access points will not be able to meet the distance requirement, and so that will limit the number of structures that can be built on this property. There will be basically 15 two-family units that could be built on this property based on the, the fire code constraints associated with access. That's important to note. The star shows the approximate location of 3210 Florence Road. The aerial here shows the property extents. Looking at the property, north, south, east, and west. It is also located in the neighborhood infield growth sector, so that's where we want to see growth happening, and you want it to be as intense as possible. It is also located in the residential mix, land use, so that is also, this request would be consistent, is consistent with the future land use. The comp plan recommendations that would be furthered are noted on the slide. Again, the intent here is to allow for diverse housing. The duplexes would allow for that in this particular growth sector. And one could make the case that this is an example of providing missing middle housing. As it relates to utilities, all the utilities are provided and are available. As we mentioned, there is access off of Florence Road, but because it is limited, the number of lots will, number of dwelling units will be limited. And then also, there will be no need for a traffic impact analysis, again, because the number of structures that's going to be built will not trigger those thresholds that require traffic impact analysis. There is a proposed thoroughfare trail that's located along the west side of Florence Road. Also, parkland fees or, or parkland dedication and development fees will be required for the future development, and the numbers on the slide pretty much show that either they can dedicate .4485 acres or pay fees in little parkland dedication, which would be $22,500. And I would note there that basically the way the ordinance is written, most likely they'll end up paying the $22,500. And then also for the park development fees, that they would end up paying $13,500. So this is showing that the final lot count could possibly change. If, if it does, or if it does change, then parkland dedication requirements and costs may, may change. It's also showing here that while none of the properties here are really located in a city-regulated floodplain, there is a known wetland area. But again, that's something that wouldn't be dealt with as a part of land use and zoning, but it would be dealt with as we go further into the development and regulate, regulatory process. All notifications have been accomplished to date. Staff has received four written responses, and then we're showing the percentage there. And then again, this kind of shows where the responses, at the time that we've done this, we receive these responses. We may have since this time received one other response or so, but the stars on the map show the, those that responded in opposition. Most of them were really concerned about keeping the, the area natural. They were concerned about possible traffic impacts. Some were concerned about property values being impacted and, and things of that nature. Again, we believe that this request is consistent with the comp plan, also consistent with the prevailing community character. As you, if you've been in this area before, you know there's some single-family homes out there. There's some duplexes out there, and there are also some fourplexes out there as well. So all of that's consistent with the land use of residential mix. Staff has recommended approval of the applicant's request to rezon the property from Single Family and Mobile Home District to Two-Family Residential District. And at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on October 14th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend disapproval of this, and so as the city's secretary red is going to require six affirmative votes by this council in order for this request to receive approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell, but for clarity, Mr. Rebell did complete counsel PH-24048. This item that he's discussing now is PH-24-050.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I will make that correction for the record, Madam Secretary. With that being said, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at an aerial map here that's pretty clear. I just want to make sure, make sure I'm seeing this correctly.
Do you want him to pull up the map?
No, no, no. I'm looking at a separate aerial, sorry. There are existing two-family inside of the shape of this property line. Is that correct?
Inside of the shape of the property?
Right there in the space in between.
Oh, along King's Court?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Okay. And then there are two-family to the west of the property, correct?
Yes.
Then there are mobile homes just south of the property outside of that business use.
Yes.
And those are two-family north of the property, property as well. Those are a single-family just north.
Should be a single-family.
And then to the east is older single-family. I mean, I can see the reason for proposing two-family here. To me, it just kind of makes sense as far as buffer and transition. What exactly was the hang-up for P and Z, if you will, for this particular proposal?
So, and I'm looking at that now. Basically, they, they stated that concerns about safety and flooding. When this was presented, there were several that got up and spoke and expressed concerns about the area stand natural, the protection of the natural things that are there. And, and so there was just concern about safety and flooding. But as we reported, none of the properties in a, in a city regulatory floodplain. Generally speaking, just, just, just for knowledge, every place, no matter where it is, is considered to be in a flood zone. So this, this is in a flood zone, but it's called Zone X, but the risk of flooding is extremely low.
Right.
Yeah.
Understood. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, so do we know of any wildlife, anything on a protective list, protective list that there would be a concern?
No.
Okay. And I'm looking at the same map, on your map, and I see where King's Court is. I wrote by there, and that's, that would be the only ingress and egress for this since there's, there's already Grenada and Turtle Creek are so close. What about the entrance? And I don't want to get in too far into planning because I know that deals with this more so. I guess to me, does the applicant know because of that, whatever they were planning is now, if this is approved, is going to be a whole lot less?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I know that's where a lot of the fight comes when the planning process starts.
The planning process? Yes, sir. Absolutely.
So my, I guess you answered about the wildlife. You already answered about the disapproval. My question was answered. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Madam Secretary.
PH 24049, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by TCG Engineering on behalf of McLean Commercial Limited, case number Z 2429, to rezone approximately 87.44 acres out of the WH Cole Survey, abstract number 200, from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject property is generally located on the west side of Featherline Drive, west of the intersection of Malmason Road, Colleen, Texas. Requires a three-fourth majority vote.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Rebell.
Yes, ma'am. This is case number Z 2429, rezoning property from agricultural to residential, single-family residential. Will show where the property is approximately located on the map, but the intent is to allow for an approximately 300 single-family home development, as, as shown here, it's about 87.44 acres. If you recall, there was a request that was submitted by the applicant to rezon this property. I've got to make a slight correction on this slide. That, that request, at the time that it was heard by council on April the 23rd, the council made the decision to table it until the March the 14th meeting. So really, the council actually voted to deny the prior request on March the 14th of 2024. So just want to make that correction. It was heard, but tabled on April the 23rd. Per the Code of Ordinances, Section 3139G, when a zoning petition fails, there's certain, you, you can't come back with the same petition, you know, within 12 months unless it's substantially changed. And one of the elements that allows for substantial change is if the size of the area to be rezoned has been reduced by 20% or more. In this particular case, if you recall, as the second bullet is noting, the, the original request was 195 acres. This request is 87.44 acres, and so 55% far exceeds the 20% threshold, which allows for this request to be heard sooner than 12 months. The star shows the approximate location. The area cordon off there. And then I want to just give a little background. As I mentioned, and I'll, and I'll make a slight correction on this, too. On March 18th, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case and recommended to disapprove it. It came before City Council on April the 23rd, as I mentioned before, and the council made the decision to table it until March the 14th, to May the 14th. On May 11th, as noted on the slide, staff participated in, in the effort in the outreach community to test the water pressure and found out that the water pressure far exceeded community to test the water pressure and found out that the water pressure far exceeded the requirements. And then on May fourteenth, this case came back to the council and the council, or the case came back in the original construct of the hundred and ninety-five acres on March the fourteenth, and the council decided to vote to recommend disapproval. I believe the vote was, well, it disapproved it, the vote was five to two, so it fell short of the six required. And then on July eighth, there was a town hall meeting that was held and convened by Councilwoman Cobb and Councilman Solomon, where there was an opportunity to hear residents' concerns regarding water pressure, regarding Featherline, regarding impacts to schools, the schools and things of that nature. And then also on August the eighth, there was another town hall meeting. This was hosted by Bell County Commissioner Minor with similar discussions, given update to the residents, make sure that they were, they were being heard and actions were being taken to address what was heard. On April, on August the twelfth, Bell County had a public hearing regarding stop signs at intersection of Chaparral Road and Featherline. On September the twelfth of twenty twenty four, the city constructed a right turn, a temporary right turn lane on Featherline Road, and it actually opened on September the twelfth of twenty twenty four. And then also on October eleventh of twenty twenty four, the stop signs that were discussed at that August twelfth meeting were actually unveiled and made operational at the intersection of Chaparral Road and Featherline. And these pictures just kind of depict staff being on site. This was related to the water pressure conversation and testing, pictures related to Commissioner Minor when he convened his meeting, and then also Councilwoman Cobb and Councilor Solomon when they convened their meeting with the public, of course. This is a view with the property facing west, facing north, headed toward Stage, headed towards Stagecoach, which is probably about a half a mile walk from this site to Stagecoach. And then a view of the subject property facing south, headed towards Chaparral Road, which is probably about a three-quarters mile walk along Featherline from this site. And then also a view of the subject property looking east across Featherline Road. Also, just wanted to communicate, again, the new stop sign. This is, this picture is really showing the Chaparral Road here and Featherline there, and the new stop signs that was put in place by Bell County. And then this picture is also showing us obviously the right turn lane off of Featherline onto Chaparral that was put in by the city of Colleen. So just some more things to note. As has been discussed already, design associated with the Featherline Road improvements is anticipated to begin in January of next year. We believe that design year will take a maximum, design will take a maximum of two years to complete, which will allow for construction along Featherline Road improvements, which actually includes sidewalks on both sides, lighting, and things of that nature to happen in twenty twenty seven. This applicant's request, if it's approved, there will be a period that will require design and construction for the subdivision improvements. We believe that will take at least two years. It could be up with a five, but we believe it could be somewhere two to five years. And I want to take a, take a note here. Just like the city has to go through a process, right, to build a road, make improvements to a road, the developer has to go through a process to put in roads, to put in pipes underground, to put in water systems and wastewater systems. They have to go through a process. And if you think about that process, it's pretty involved. That work, that you have to engage an engineer, and that engineer has to design all of those systems. Then once all that's designed, they got to submit plans to the city, and the city's got to review those plans and make comments on those plans. There's a constant back and forth, constant back and forth. And then once a permit is issued or permission is issued, then they can start the construction work. And the construction works associated with putting in roads for this particular development, associated with putting in pipes underground for water, for wastewater, putting in utilities, all of that take quite a bit of time. And that's what we're saying, that that time period could be somewhere in the two to five-year time period. Because just like we take time to do improvements on city-related roads as a capital project, they have to take time to do that same kind of improvement, follow the same kind of process, but it also includes our review as a part of their time to get their development done. So it's not hard to see how the development on both ends could take the time that it takes because it's a very involved process. Again, staff is anticipating that Featherline Road will be under construction before any new homes are built on the subject property. And we also further believe that even before the first C of O is issued for that site, that Featherline could actually be completed. So timelines are matching up. And I would say this too, as a point of personal privilege, please recall, maybe about eighteen months ago, I don't remember the exact date, Thousand Oaks Preserve, you know, we had a similar conversation about when that development came up, there was conversations about what was going to be the impact on Stagecoach Road. Will the city be able to address its obligations to deal with Stagecoach Road? And I think we all know the answer to that. The answer is the city is able to address that. As a matter of fact, Stagecoach as it relates to, be it being issued, being put out for construction, could happen this month or early next month. So the city has been able to keep its word, the city has been able to time itself. And as you all know, the development associated with Thousand Oaks is still going on. The first phase is still happening, and no home has been built, and so no impact has happened to that road. And so things are on schedule. So it works, you know, this process works, and I don't want anybody to think that we're novices at this. It works, and it can work here as well. It's also good to point out that, you know, there was some conversation about children having safe routes to schools. I just wanted to point out that this is, this is actually part of, this is part of a, an established sidewalk network throughout the Yow Ranch community that basically allows children safe passage through that community to Chaparral High School. It's also important to note that even properties that would be developed, if this development happens, you know, and it's west of Featherline, there will be protections in place that allow for crossings of children that they can cross over and, again, get to this kind of internal network that allows them to get to school safely. They don't have to necessarily walk down Featherline Road to go, to go all the way to school. And then obviously, when Featherline Road improvements are done, there will be sidewalks on either side that will, that will accommodate that if that's what the desire is. Now, as it relates to the controlled growth, again, I want to take a little time here. This property is located in the controlled growth sector of the growth sector map. And again, controlled growth doesn't mean no growth. It just means that we need to be careful how growth happens. And it means that it's okay to allow growth to happen, but make sure that it happens in a way that it makes the neighborhood more complete. And we believe that this development does contribute to that. Make sure that it happens in such a way that it makes the neighborhood more connected and more walkable. We believe that will happen because we have city requirements that says the local roads have to have sidewalks on either side, and those sidewalks are going to have to connect back to Featherline that will have sidewalks as well. So make sure that you've got connectivity and that's the case. And then it says also make sure that it's fiscally sustainable. And we've done the calculations, you'll see them, if you read the presentation, you already know them. And again, all of those, all of those boxes are checked. Again, this is not no growth, this is controlled growth. And I'll keep moving. As it relates to the residential mix, this is consistent. Again, residential mix actually allows for a development of this type. It allows for a single-family development. It allows for, it does allow for two-family developments, it does allow for town home developments, it does allow for, for some extent of commercial, because look at the third bullet, it does allow for some extent of that. But the development that's in front of us is a single-family residential development. It's appropriate for, it's appropriate for this area, it's consistent with the residential mix. This area has been, over the years, transitioning from rural and agriculture to something that's more urban and residential. That's consistent. This development is consistent with that transition. I also would like to note that, I know, over the weeks, there's been a lot of reference to the city's comp plan. And I think it's important to note that the comp plan encourages this kind of growth. The comp plan basically says that we need to be concerned about development pattern. That's what it says, we need to be concerned about development pattern. And you can have, and the comp plan says there are three types of development pattern: rural, suburban, and urban. Right? And a lot of us are familiar with it, with the suburban, because we're familiar with the sprawl. And it says, hey, make sure that you don't continue that development pattern of sprawl. And it says, hey, that rural development pattern can be there, but it doesn't need to be there as much, it doesn't need to be there as much as that urban development pattern. Okay? And so this development that's being proposed here is more so urban than it is rural, and is more so urban, it's closer to, it's closer to urban than it is suburban. Okay? And the way we're able to determine that, think about this for a moment. The properties, if you're familiar with this area, the properties on Llewellyn Estate, those are one-acre lots that's just to the north of this area. The properties that's south of this area, I think it's Prairie's Estate, is half an acre lots. Those developments in terms of development pattern are more rural in nature. And rural development patterns is land-focused, it's more so focused on land. The development to the east, which is Yow Ranch, is more so urban in pattern. And urban development pattern is more so people-focused. And the suburban, just for completeness, is more so vehicle or car-focused. Okay? The comp plan encourages us to transition from rural, which is land-focused, and to transition from suburban, which is car-focused, to something that is urban, which is people-focused. And that's what this is. And so just keep that in mind. The, this is a part of the residential mix, future land use, as I've mentioned. I think I dealt with this enough that I won't have to talk about this. I will say this, though. This development does promote building complete neighborhoods, period. It does. It's unreasonable for anybody to think that every development that is to be done has to come with, with, with commercial. That's just not the case. The comp plan talked about incremental improvements, right? It talked about incremental improvements. And it talked about adding to the neighborhood. This subdivision that's being developed is not the neighborhood, it's being inserted in a neighborhood, a neighborhood that has a police headquarters, a neighborhood that has a park, that park that's to be developed that will be for the public on, off of Stagecoach with Thousand Oaks, a neighborhood that has commercial on the corner of Featherline and Stagecoach, and on the other corner of Featherline and Chaparral. It's being added to a neighborhood. It's not a neighborhood in and of itself. I'd like to deal with the fiscal impact analysis a little bit here. So the comp plan, again, this is the comp plan. The comp plan says that when this was done, that in order for a property to generate, that currently, based on when this was done, if you took all of the property taxes across the city amongst all the property, and divided that number by the total acreage of the city, it's saying, at the time that this was done, it's saying each property in terms of an acre is generating one thousand four hundred and forty dollars. That's how much each property, each acre of property at the time that this was done is generating. That's what the first bullet is talking about. The second bullet is saying, while each property is generating one thousand four hundred, four hundred and forty dollars an acre, what's needed in order to support city services and maintain city, existing city infrastructure is three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars an acre.
Ms. Brown, that's your first warning for disrupting the meeting by Mr. Revaile having to stop. That's your first one. Mr. Revaile, I apologize for that distraction.
Yes, ma'am.
Continue, please.
Yes, ma'am. So the comp plan says what's needed to support city services and existing infrastructure is three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars an acre. So what the comp plan recommended was following a development pattern that was not, that would not generate one thousand four hundred and forty dollars an acre, but a development pattern that got you closer to three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars an acre, which development pattern is that. It's surely not rural, and it's surely not suburban, but it is urban. And that's what this development is. So it's in line with the comp plan. And then the third bullet, the five thousand dollars an acre, the comp plan basically said, listen, if the council and if the staff does not heed the advice of the comp plan, if we don't follow the comp plan at all, and we allow more suburban and we allow more rural, then instead of that break-even number being three thousand and three hundred and fifty dollars, it needs to be five thousand dollars. That's what the comp plan is saying. Okay? It needs to be five thousand. So check this out. We are, we've changed the development pattern. This council changed the development pattern, right?
Sorry, council, I can hear you, and I know other people can too. Please be respectful of Mr. Revaile's time.
Okay.
I apologize, Mr. Revaile.
You need me to, you need me to speed up, mayor?
No, sir. Somebody down there talking, and it goes for them to be respectful of your time.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure, Mr. Revaile, that you, because I'm going to come back and ask you some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So I want to make sure if the resident took their time to come here, to speak on it, I want to make sure they have all the information. Please continue.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. And so, again, the five thousand is saying, hey, we're not going to regard the comp plan, but we have been. And five thousand is saying that we're just going to follow that old development pattern, and we're going to develop out within the city, follow that old development pattern, then our target needs to be five thousand dollars an acre. But we're not doing that. So really, our target should be somewhere between three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars an acre and five thousand. Okay? That's what the comp plan is encouraging. That's how we use the information to determine whether something, what the markers are for what's fiscal, fiscally sustainable, what's not. Now, I will go ahead and say this as a point of personal privilege. There has been conversation about seven thousand dollars an acre. There's been conversations about that. And the comp plan does speak about that if you want to deal with future infrastructure needs, you may need seven thousand. But here's the deal. The deal is, is that, again, that was on, that was using assumptions that we weren't going to change the development pattern, but we have. Okay? So that worst case is not even there because we changed the development pattern. That also was making an assumption that we were not going to change our design standards associated with our roadways, but guess what? We did. And we changed them such that the roadways have to last at least twenty years. And then it also is making the assumption that we weren't going to use pavement management strategies that allow us to extend the life of a twenty-year roadway to thirty years. None of that's taken into account in that seven thousand. So you see how you can get seven thousand when you don't take that into account. But here's the deal, we're doing all of that. So for me, the seven thousand is a number that's not realistic for us to use because we're not in that market. We've learned and we've done what the comp plan has said. That's why I think we should stay between this thirty-three fifty and this five thousand. That's a break-even point for developments, for making sure that they pay for themselves. So the fiscal impact analysis, I won't spend a lot of time on this Gantt chart because I think you all got that, so I'll just drill right into this. So for this particular development, as we know, it's eighty seven point four acres, there's three hundred units that's being proposed. The current, we know the current city tax rate is, we put there. If you do the calculation, and you say if those three hundred homes were worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they would generate, just at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, five thousand six hundred and forty an acre. Exceeds the thirty-three fifty break-even, even exceeds the five thousand break-even. Our sweet spot is somewhere between thirty-three fifty and five thousand. If their homes were three hundred thousand, even more, exceeds it even more. And if the homes were three hundred and fifty, which we think would probably be the case for this, because these are probably going to be sixty-five-foot lots and three-car garages, if it's three hundred and fifty, then it's almost eight thousand an acre. Ingress and egress, it will be off of Featherline Road, as mentioned here. Also, there is, will be an east-west collector from Malmason that will be required, and the developer will have to, to deal with that. Also, a traffic impact analysis will be required. Also, a traffic impact analysis will be required. So any impact associated with, um, you know, going over to Tremere, uh, across the east-west or any impact associated with Featherline Road, you know, while we're doing improvements, um, all of that, the developer, if they have impacts as a part of that traffic impact analysis, they will have to, um, deal with those impacts by most likely contributing to to the project or or some other way to deal with those impacts. I I do want to point out that the thoroughfare plan, and and this is important here. A thoroughfare plan for the city basically kind of shows you where all the the proposed and roadways, new roadways should be and 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 changes to roadway uses and classifications. And so here, as I've mentioned, across this development, there there is a thoroughfare that's proposed there and the developer would have to put this thoroughfare in place across their limits, really from, give me, give me one second, from there to there, like their their property limits. They'll have to put something in place there. Um, as relates to the thoroughfare plan, just like our comp plan, there's a need to update that periodically. And so there will be an item that come before you all when we do our comp plan update. Um, amendments, we will also include a thoroughfare plan amendment. And part of the reason why we need to do that is because thi- this really contemplates two thoroughfares across and 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 so far, staff is not seeing the need for two thoroughfares. So there'll be a process that will allow us to address that. And this is not the only place where we've got thoroughfare plan updates. There are other places associated with the business district that we've got and a couple of other locations. But all of that will come as one, um, request and item for the for the council's consideration early next year. Um, so again, I've I've already spoke to this. And so the thoroughfare plan amendment will need to happen prior to the preliminary plat for this particular development. Uh, waters, sanitary sewer and drainage service, they're all they're all nearby and they're all available. Um, there there was conversations about, well, the water and wastewater plan is 2019, right? There was conversations about that and and today is 2024, soon to be 2025. The water and wastewater plan, the draft plan is already done. This area was already analyzed as a part of that. And when it was analyzed, it took into account full bill out, full bill out. Not just this development, but all bill out that's in this area. Took into account full bill out. And even the analysis that's been thus done thus far, based for this bill out alone, 300 lots, we have existing capacity in terms of water and sewer and drainage to accommodate that without any upsizing. Now, when full bill out, when field full bu- bill out is needed for the area, which is more than just this development, um, then there there may be a need. But this development will not trigger a need associated with water, sewer and drainage services. That has been done, calculated by outside consultants, as well as verified by our assistant city engineer, Steve Conyac. Um, parkland dedication fees, um, as you all know, that that is a requirement. The parkland dedication requirement would be 4.485 acres. Um, fees in lieu of dedication would be $225,000. And then park development fees associated with actually allowing for park development to take place, park amenities, park amenities to be, um, placed and constructed and installed or whatever it may be would be 135,000. Uh, the property is within Zone X, which is a FEMA regulatory special flood hazard area, but it's not a city, um, regulatory area. And then also, there is, um, some wetlands presence on the property, but all of that can be addressed as a part of the engineering review associated with the regulatory and development process. And the maps really show, again, um, you know, is the creeks and here and the property is here. So, um, there is a green area here that that may have a small impact, but you're talking about a couple of acres across, um, 87 acres is negligible. It can be addressed. Um, staff did accomplish all notifications as noted here. Uh, we did receive 27 written responses. We did receive, um, oppositions that amounted to about, um, 12% of the 200-foot notification boundary or buffer. Uh, again, staff is recommending approval of this request for all of the various reasons that I've already stated. Um, and that approval would be to rezone the property from agriculture to single-family residential, um, dish. Now, at the October 14th, um, planning and zoning commission meeting, uh, they did vote to disapprove this request by a vote of three to two, um, uh, with with some some opposition there. And therefore, it will require six affirmative votes by this council in in order to, um, pass when the time to vote comes.
Mr. Revel, I'd like to thank you. Uh, if you don't mind, what you you said a lot of information and for some residents, this may be their first time attending a city council meeting or hearing a rezoning item. Uh, out of everything that you said, I do want you to talk about that infrastructure being in place. But could you recap everything that you said before council asks questions? Could you just recap everything to make it clear and plain why the City of Colleen says that this, um, this zoning item should go forward for the residents that may be new here in the once area, huh? Please.
Yes, ma'am. So first of all, the development in terms of development pattern is closer to urban than any of the three development patterns. So we talked about rural, which is more so land focused. We talked about suburban, which is more so car focused. And we talked about urban, which is people focused. And this development is more so people focused than it is anything else. So that's number one. And that's the development pattern that the comp plan encourages. The comp plan encourages growing from within our existing city limits. Last time I checked, this property is within our existing city limits. This is what the comp plan says we should be doing, is growing from within our existing city limits. Um, and so that's point number two. Point number three is because it's in a controlled growth area, the comp plan says it's not a free-for-all growth. And what you should look at is is does the growth that's being planned allow for the the neighborhood to be more complete, more connected, more pedestrian friendly? And is the development fiscally responsible? Answer to all those questions are are resounding yes. As it relates to anything else associated with Featherline, um, the city already has a plan in place that will allow for those improvements to happen. We strongly believe that those improvements can happen and and be in place with the road functional and operating the way it is designed and constructed uh, before the first C of O is issued associated with this development. Um, so and then as it relates to natural things and traffic things, there there will possibly be traffic impacts. But those traffic impacts will be accounted for, fully accounted for in a traffic impact analysis. The council has already put that standard in place. The next round of this process will allow for that traffic impact analysis to be done. If there are traffic impacts from this development, uh, there will be opportunities for that to be addressed. The city already will already have a project going on, so there'll be opportunities for that to be addressed how it needs to be addressed, um, um, there and and in that time. And then as it relates to natural resources, as you saw yourself, um, as it relates to regulatory stuff, maybe one or two acres of the property is impacted by wetlands. Again, that can be addressed through a regulatory process or stay away from a stay out of process that can easily be accomplished.
Thank you. And I have one acts of the council. I don't know which way you're going to vote, but I would not be on the council in 2027. And I ask if some of you are on this council, please, please ensure that that roadway is completed as we have put out today that it become a priority of yours to ensure what Mr. Revel said.
I got one more point, if I may.
You sure can, sir.
Yes, ma'am. It is also important to point out that this development is fiscally sustainable. Um, currently, the 87 acres on average generates $36 an acre. That's what it currently generates, $36 an acre. That's far short of the 1440 that I talked about on the slide that was inadequate itself. All right? So this development is fiscally, will be fiscally sustainable. It will transition from being completely off the map to be completely off the map, but in a positive way, if you will, um, you know, from the bottom end to the low end, so to speak. But i- 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 so so that, keep that in mind as well. It is fiscally, uh, sustainable, um, numbers in the vicinity of of, I think it was, uh, what, 5,500 to to almost 8,000 an acre.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Revel. I did want to note that it's good to have young people here to witness how city business occurs at the local government level. That's great. The first time this case was brought to us, P and Z rejected it at five to zero. I believe it was unanimous. Want to make sure I'm correct there. The first time it came to the council.
I don't want to s- I don't want to say that, um, if Wallace, Wallace, if you know. I'll ask Wallace if she can come to speak to that for me, please.
Mr. Um, Councilmember Boyd, Mr. Revel, did you not have a timeline that you showed up there? It was a timeline you had. So you can just flip back because he may have some more questions concerning timeline.
Yeah, I've got the timeline, but whether or not the vote was unanimous, I don't want to misstate whether or not.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Wallace.
I don't recall if it was unanimous or not, but if you bear with me just a second, I can get the answer to that pretty quickly.
No problem. What I did want to note, and, uh, you can follow up with that at any point, that's fine, is that the vote was three to two. So this was not a unanimous vote for this most recent.
Yes, sir.
Disapproval.
Yes, sir.
So I did want to highlight that for the council. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, councilwoman Carr.
Mr. Revel, if I had to go to court, I would take you. What an excellent explanation. When I first voted, I did not understand. My mother always told me, with all thy learning, get an understanding.
Yes, ma'am.
I have an understanding. Thank you for that excellent job, sir. I hate to see you leave.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Cigar.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Revel, uh, you bring up the, uh, the cost, you know, what the city brings in per acre.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, that was eye-opening when we did the comp plan. And as you mentioned, you know, in the past, uh, when we, when somebody wanted to build a house, what they were looking for was more space. And that was the big thing. Even as a city, we would say, you know, these lots are too small. We want more space. We want them wider. And that was something in the past. And you mentioned that the prices, you know, based on price, the city's going to make this amount. But what was eye-opening to me when we did that comp plan was that they kind of recommended we do the reverse. And instead of making these lots big per acre, you know, make them smaller and the city will generate more revenue because now you're you're going against what a lot of people wanted. You know, they want big acres, they want a lot of lots and stuff like that. But when you do that calculation based on the sales price, do you know how many homes are being built on an acre using that calculation? You know, because if you say a home per acre and it's 300 and I think you mentioned 350 and we're going to make 6,000 per that, is that, you know, ju- per one house per acre? Or is is that four houses per acre, six houses per acre?
Sure, sure. This, if you look at it from a growth standpoint, from a growth standpoint, you know, you've got, what, 87.44 acres? You've got 300 lots. You know, that's like 3.4, 3.5, whatever that number is. So that's 3.5 units a lot from a growth standpoint. You know, once you get the taking the roads and the and 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 the street network and things of that nature, that's going to change. And so it 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 may end up being five to six units a lot. But I I'll tell you this, and I appreciate you you mentioning this. It will it will provide a density that will be different. It will be different from the Yau Ranch density, which is probably seven to eight acres a lot. It surely will be different from the Llewellyn density, which is one lot, you know, one, one, one house an acre and and surely be different from, um, the, um, Perry Estates, which which is really two units an acre. Yeah.
No, and I think that we're in line with the way the, uh, city and I think the whole country has grown because prices are, you know, going up no matter what. And, um, I'm saying today I saw a townhouse and the townhouse basically was a duplex split. And you buy half of the duplex for $200,000 and it's like, that's insane. But, you know, people can't afford our higher-priced homes. And that's what we're going to see of. And I, you know, my first question was, okay, if there's hail damage, who fixes the roof? So that's just an example, but there's a lot of things that are going to go on with that. But that's what we're seeing and I think that having these smaller lots, uh, will help, you know, because this, we're growing and so. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
That was one thing I felt this year, Mayor, if it's okay. You know, there had been some question about, you know, what's the housing demand? Okay? Well, let's let's follow the comp plan. The comp plan clearly says that the housing demand outpaces the supply by 3,000 units a year. That's what the comp plan says. You know, it it says that. So 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 is there a housing demand per the comp plan? You bet there is. As it relates to population, the co- the comp plan says that the population from from 2020 to 2040 could increase by 50,000 people. That's the demand. Those people need housing. You know, so that that population demand lines up with that housing demand. And so there was some conversation about, well, there's not a need for housing. Well, the comp plan says there is. And then I think there was a recent article in KDH that that showed that population is increasing. Now, the population rate that the comp plan predicts is probably about 1.6% a year. The population increase that we saw in the paper was right at about 1.4%. So it's close, but it's happening.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I've mentioned that it's supply and demand is what dictates that. And, you know, you're you're investing whoever it is, developers, home builders, millions of dollars. And so they're being optimistic and they know what's coming. You know, they do the market research. And the other side of that is, as a city, one of the things that we want to try to do for all of our citizens, because I know that this is true fact, you know, they want to make homes affordable. You know, homes keep going up, they can't afford them and then their prices on their taxes keeps going up. And so that's on the other side of this. It's like, how do you keep that at a stable pace, you know, because we know they're going to go up? But, all right. Well, with that, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, um, and I I actually had the answer to that question about the five. I looked at the minutes and it was on the March 18th vote, it was five to zero. Um, my question is, um, when we talk about the Featherline Road, which has been a major issue of contention, is it a remote possibility that design will come, the design process will be completed before two years? I know we talked about longer, but I've seen this happen sooner since we've made adjustments to those, to how we do business.
Mr. Zager.
Uh, realistically, we're thinking it will be two years. There's some environmental, there's some Corps of Engineers. We have some other permitting that are outside the city that we're going to have to deal with that could slow things down. Um, that's kind of the conservative estimate is two years. I mean, we're going to try to get as fast as we can, but, um, that's kind of the the plan is just focus on that two-year.
Yeah. And if I'm not mistaken, those same things that will slow, that process will also slow the platting process.
Yeah. I think everything's all kind of intertwined.
Okay. Um, you and you answered my other questions I don't want to repeat. Um, and Mr. Revel, I want to say thank you, but we do have a franchise fee that's you got, that's owed to us for your debauchment.
All right, then stay focused. Uh, Mr. Zager, before you leave, sir, quick question.
Okay.
About the timeline that we have and 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 you stated that there is a timeline, but we didn't have timeline, this would be one of the top priority to stay within that two-year frame. That is our focus.
Yes, we do have a, we do have an estimate from a cons- a consultant right now that we're hoping to bring to council in January for a design contract if we're moving forward with this project.
Right, that's in January, 2027.
Twenty-five is when we're going to start the design.
Right, design.
And then.
The construction in 2027.
Correct.
Now, I don't want to have to come back and run again, but I'm just saying, keep that in mind.
I've been successful in all the other ones so far.
Okay. But I want, here, I need some concrete because that's something that was brought up in our town hall meeting by a resident. Can you give us a guarantee? We can't give you a guarantee on anything because weather, uh, supply and demand material, a lot of things plays a factor. But when we speak on behalf of the city and open our mouth and give some timeline, we got to be held accountable to it. Yes, sir. Okay, councilmember, uh, are you finished, Adams? Councilwoman, uh, Mayor Pearl Town.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Revel, you said something today that was a little different. You said this is not the neighborhood, but this is being inserted within the neighborhood. It was a different perspective there. Um, I just want to, a lot of questions that had come up at the last, uh, meeting were regarding, um, the prioritization of Featherline, the expansion of the roadway sidewalks, safety. Based on everything that I'm hearing today, though, it seems like this development. like this development is also triggering the expedition, the expediting of these developments as it relates to this. Is that, would that be a true statement?
Well, yes, ma'am. I, I think, you know, this council has, has made Featherline improvements a priority. So, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then with the FEMA Zone X, of course, that drainage area being very low, there's a lot of regulation that's required for that as far as, I know that's been a concern for some folks. So do you have anything that you can kind of expand on that for people that might not be as knowledgeable on?
Yeah, so, so, so they'll have to, as it relates to drainage, one of the things that they'll have to demonstrate is that whatever the flooding or runoff conditions are now, they'll have to maintain those conditions once the site is developed, which means that they'll have to put in engineering controls, put in detention, or something that allows the, what you call pre-existing conditions to, 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 basically the post-conditions, if you will, to match pre-existing conditions. So there is already, there are already regulations in place that preserve that the runoff and the flooding doesn't increase from the property. Now, as it relates to Zone X, I, I want to deal with that just very quickly. Zone X, Zone X, there are two Zone Xs, this unshaded Zone X and a shaded Zone X. The shaded Zone X is considered to be the 500-year floodplain. And again, it, that's typically a floodplain that cities do not regulate. Cities regulate the 100-year floodplain. You know, so some portion of this property is in the shaded Zone X, some portion of this property is unshaded. Unshaded, as I say, it could be a mountain. So, so it's, it's all about risk. We believe that the risks associated with flooding for this property is minimal. I know there's been conversations about, you know, maps needing to be updated. Maps need to be updated across all cities, across all, all, all states, across the world. I mean, FEMA, FEMA is behind on, on mapping update. And so those, those, those things have to be done. But keep in mind, when this, the site comes forward for development, whatever needs to be done in order to meet city requirements, whether FEMA maps are updated or not, they will be done so that we preserve that drainage and you don't have runoff from one property to the other.
Understood. Thank you very much for that.
And to add on that, Mayor Proton, when it comes to the floodplain, where's flood, it cannot be worse than the way they found it. That's what basically he's saying in common sense, is that if it's a drainage or something, if it's working now, when they leave, it has to be working or better. So it won't get worse. And I'm just making it plain because this is a very important topic. Yes, ma'am. With that being said, Councilwoman Cobb, and we'll end with Councilmember Solomon.
All right. I, I'd really want to say something. I'm proud of the citizens of my district because they brought things to our attention. I'm proud of the, the space and the land and the open and all the good things that come with listening. But the city of Colleen, I made a statement, the city of Colleen's nor any of its representatives asked for this zoning case. The landowner requested it. The request followed the usual, usually zoning process. So we went through all of this process and we've, we've turned over dirt. We've listened to everyone. I see it loud and clear. The zoning process was not expedited. This case is about the proper zoning of land. Simple. I remember earlier, when I first got on the council, I think you remember me saying, your land, do what you want to do with it. If it's mine, I'm going to do what I want to do with it. And I'm going to keep working until I get what I want with it. So that's just the way it happens. But we happen to have a zoning process that takes place. We have made considerably improvements to our development codes to ensure that this project and future projects will be a neighborhood instead of a subdivision, and that the infrastructure will have a long useful life. Featherline Road will be improved before the first residents would ever move into a neighborhood. If you listen to the information that Mr. Revel has given us tonight, before anything can happen, it will improve. And I guarantee you, in or out of office, I'm going to work and I'm going to watch to ensure that it happens. So we want to make sure that everyone has said and have had their piece in their word. But Mr. Revel, you're not a novice. You're not. This is not your first time. Tonight, you have given us everything from the top to bottom, the side. I have walked on the line. I've listened to people. I've read reports. I've seen so much stuff, I think I look like Featherline. But what I know, that everyone has the heart to do right. I told you that I would be honest. I would be just, and I will be fair. And that's all I have for you.
And for the residents that's new and also the ones that are looking at home, your land, your property, but you must follow one thing within the city ordinance. No matter what you build or rezone, it must fall within the city ordinance. And the other thing is, the council, Mr. Revel and Mr. Zager said, by 2025, we will have our design, January. Okay, in 2027, the construction will begin. And like I said, I, I want to go on the record that the city's saying it will be concrete complete. It predicated on the weather, supply and demand are lacking happen. But Mr. Zager gave us the nod that so far, what he said has happened, and this council will make it a top priority to complete it. I just want to make that clarification. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say, Mr. Revel, thank you so much for that presentation and very extensive information. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. First of all, would you comment again on the sidewalks, whether it be with the development or the Featherline area?
Yes, sir. So for the 87.44 acre development, local roads obviously will be required. And all of those required local roads will meet city standards. You know, city whip standards, city street side standards, which includes sidewalks on both sides of the street, street trees and things of that nature. So all those local roads will have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Featherline improvement that the city is doing also will have sidewalks on both sides of the street. So does that address your?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you, sir. And then with the, the development has to do, you mentioned about doing a traffic impact. Will that impact have any changes on the design of Featherline? I mean, once they, is that before Featherline is developed? I mean, I'm trying to connect if you see.
And I, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Zager to come and, and deal with that, make sure we.
So as the development comes in, they're going to do a traffic impact analysis that shows what their impact is on the local roads, whether it be Featherline, the intersection of Stagecoach, Chaparral, and see if there's any needed improvements to the existing conditions. That'll be what they have to contribute to whatever improvements. As we're working on our design and we start working on whether we need to do, you know, improvements at Malmasan, which we know we do, if there's any additional, you know, improvements to the intersection, that'll be in conjunction with what their, their T I A, we'll be looking at having some contribution. Because according to our code, that is a requirement for their mitigation efforts is to offset what their mitigations or what their, what their impacts are to our roadways.
Okay. And so we're looking at perhaps a, a three lane rather than a two lane?
Correct. It'll be a three lane minimum for this roadway. It'll be designed as an arterial. It'll be, we'll have the right of way for the full width in the event that there's a lot of development and in the future, there's a lot more traffic, that the roadway could get widened to five. But immediate needs and, and really the next 20 years, we only predict this thing to be needing a three lane roadway. And then we start looking at intersection improvements, a signal or roundabout at Malmasan, Featherline, you know, at the Chaparral, we know with the, with the overall Chaparral widening, that we're looking at, at intersection improvements there, signals there and also at the school. We're working with the county, working on grants on that. Just kind of a lot of different moving pieces, but.
You're looking at the designs of that, that road that is going to connect with the development road?
And there's possibility that. If the, the interconnection, if they're getting a road, having an interconnectivity that goes from Featherline over to Chamir, I'll work with the developer on that. And then, again, making sure that it all meets our standards with road sections, sidewalks, curb gutter, drainage and street trees.
Thank you, sir. And I just want to say this, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. We, we as a council, it's not, it's just not one person. It's, I believe it's the council that we heard District Three and District Two, I would say, you cry. And we don't know, I can't vouch for previous councils years ago, but we heard it and we act on it as soon as we heard it. That's one of the reasons why I turned it down initially because I wanted to hear, we wanted to hear what you had to say. And not only did we hear what you had to say, but we addressed it, you know, within the span of, as you've seen the presentation, three months. Things were, were operating progressive. And so now we got, we have Featherline as a top priority. And, and I can only imagine what y'all go through with, I've been over there in Featherline in terms of the traffic. It is crazy. It is, it was crazy. And we went over there again with the water pressure and looked at that. But it shows you that we are, we were concerned and we are concerned and we feel, we, we feel what you said. And we take it to heart. And thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Zager.
Yes, sir.
My last question is, regardless if they're completed with the development of the housing area or whatever, the construction, there still will be a, a, a traffic flow concern because you still got to work on Featherline. See, I think no one realized, no matter what happens, whether the council approve it or not tonight, Featherline Road will still have to work on it. So we have to have some kind of plans put in place as they work on it. Traffic will also be a concern. So what is our plan for that?
So that'll be part of the design is the traffic control. As part of all our projects, when we, we have to take into account construction and how we manage safely the existing traffic that is out there. So there will be, you know, traffic control. There's going to be signage. There's going to be cones. There's going to be whatever things else we need to keep the traffic flowing. And then it'll be staging construction, either doing half of a road at a time, flipping them, flipping traffic back and forth. It's same thing what we're doing on Bunny Trail, what we're doing on Gilmer, what we're doing on Water Crest, that we have to take that into account.
Okay. So no matter what, if they approve it or not, that has to happen with traffic control. It was going to go down to one lane, correct?
It would have to be a two lane minimum. So that way we keep going one in each direction. So we're going to have to maintain that.
One coming in, one going out. Okay. I just wanted to see if there was a plan in place to try to ease up some of that traffic.
That's part of the design.
That's going to be part of the design. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Revel. I don't want you to leave. I just want to say, hey, Mr. Revel, congratulations on being selected as Assistant City Manager of Leander. You have contributed your time. I'm sorry, we're not supposed to be clapping. Let me cease that fire right now, council. All right, I ceased that quick. I forgot. We was excited. Sad but excited. Thank you and your wife for everything that you contribute. I know y'all still have your home here. You still worship here and be a part of our great, great city. But thank you and, and go forth and do well. And we thank you for everything and your staff and, and anyone else before I move on. All right. Thank you. Madam Secretary. Yes, ma'am. We're going to make this, Councilmember Boyd wants to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was focused on, I'm so sorry. Mr. Alvarez, are we ready? Ready. All right. Madam Secretary, we are getting ready to go to our citizen comments on the agenda item. And for the individuals that may be new here, and this is your first council meeting, I just want to go on the quick protocol. The items that you must discuss is, must be on the agenda. This is not about planning. It's not about how many homes. It's about rezoning. And rezoning is just what it is. Anything off that subject, I will have to say, you're off the subject. Please get back on. No disrespect to you. But I know, but just the comment sheets, what everyone is coming here to speak on, it has to be on zoning. Cannot be about how many houses might be built, thinking about build. That, that is not the topic on the agenda. And council, for you two, it's about rezoning. You will have four minutes to speak. Once your four minutes is over, if you feel like, oh, I want to say something else, then you have to get approval from the council to speak an additional minute. Mr. Francisco? All right. The first person to speak is Michael Forino. Good afternoon. You have four minutes.
I'm surprised there can be this many people in attendance fighting their way through all that traffic to the Armored Warfare Museum. 116,000 for the media equipment. Please assure us that this media equipment will come without the glitches that seemingly only happen when citizen comment is happening, especially with those who disagree with the council. With regard to the city manager and his annual review, I don't care that he's not here to hear it face to face, but it's no secret that I have my issues with him. When we speak of his presiding, and for those who are new in attendance, and especially for the young people, to summarize, the city manager is supposed to manage the day-to-day affairs of the city. Manage the affairs. That's his function. Whenever something goes wrong in this town, we just got hacked. I don't recall of anybody being called to account, held to blame, fired, sanctioned, fined. Oh, that's somebody else's fault. That's his tried and true trope. He likes to whine about disabled veterans. For those of us who actually deployed and saw combat, that we get a compensation and a consideration for our service. Yet, with that, so that's due to, that causes a tremendous budget shortfall within our town. Well, why not, instead of hassling people who earn something in this world, how about go downtown and all the folks who are hitting the taxpayers twice, and by that I mean grabbing up ARPA funding and whatever funding else they can get, recoup the taxes from all those jokers downtown, two, three blocks from here, that are not paying their taxes? I mean, it's a joke. All this revenue that we're supposed to be getting, we're not getting it. Black Friday, anybody go downtown? Tumbleweeds. So this horse crap about revenue, 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 stop blaming guys like me and girls like me who actually did something and get a little bit of consideration from the state. Go recoup those taxes that are unpaid. Those folks will greedily fill out forms to get the tax money, but we don't see anything back. If they're doing such big business, we wouldn't have these worries or we'd have less of a dent in any of the budget shortfalls. Contractor fees, funny. Let's just wipe the slate clean. Let's not go back and try to recoup any of that. Again, firmly on his head, on his narrow shoulders. We're not seeing anything out of that. This man's performance is nothing but culpable inefficiency, time and time and time again. Something goes wrong, when something goes wrong, Mr. Kegel smiles because he just found somebody to blame it on. I've seen him do it to members of senior staff in this chamber, and he's never held to account. He has no regard for the citizens. He comes up with regulations ad hoc that are illegal, that he solely presides over, that he has no authority to create or administer. So I know that you're not, you all love him, but we're the end user. We're the customer. We're the people who largely pay his salary through our taxes. And yet, you'll defend him till the cows come home. But as with most things, if we disagree or object, one team, one fight, all that, we're all Team Colleen, and you just sit there and you defend him. You never take our concerns and misgivings into account in any way.
Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
Melissa Brier, you have four minutes.
Regarding multimedia updates for this room, why? The city spent hundreds of thousands upgrading them in 2019, only to have glitches and problems. And now this council has already said there will be a bond election for approximately $190 million for a brand-new city hall in May. One would hope that multimedia equipment and software would be included in an almost $200 million building. Uh, that is unless you're acknowledging that we either A, don't need a new city hall, or B, you acknowledge you don't think it's going to pass when it gets on the ballot. I'd also hope that Route Wear is approved, this is an essential part of customer service and safety to the citizens and staff. Uh, on the drainage master plan, why is it only going to have a completed flood, revised flood map for Rosewood? And why is the city paying for any portion of that revision for, uh, development? Because that's gonna be for the apartment complex, uh, that's part of that PUD over, uh, Rosewood. You know, those PUDs that were promised us certain things, even, even somewhat in writing, and then they still changed their minds. Right? Uh, to the best of my knowledge, this is not something that the city normally pays for, but let's actually talk about the important stuff. We sent letters to citizens telling them their water may not be safe to drink and advising them to get water filters or buy bottled water. Many of these residents can't afford that, and a lot of them are rentals with Section Eight. It looked like junk mail. It was addressed to current residents. Property owners were not notified. Future residents, our future tenants may not be notified. This is part of the agenda because it goes along with that study that we just did. We sent letters out to people telling them, you may have galvanized metal lines that go to your house, that were okay then, but the lead somehow got in there. It could have been from the city side way back when we first built our infrastructure, could have been from within your home, but one way or the other, you could have lead in your water. Good job, let your kids drink out of the faucet, because you know you can't afford to go buy the filters or bottled water for it. And the city council does nothing. Perfect. Apparently Waco's council and their city manager care more about the health and safety of their residents, especially their youth and elderly. They sent all of their residents that fell into that category of Brita water filter, we're doing nothing. Our city manager is more concerned with creating policies that allow for unlawful arrests for trespassing, for violating rules that our mayor abuses. He would rather take $4 million and put it into building a replacement shelter just to move people that the city leadership feel are undesirable in the downtown area and get them out of sight. Our city manager has apparently already made the decision that this replacement shelter that will cost $4 million and not expand capacity at all, will be owned by the Colleen PFC, even though that decision hasn't been made publicly and the PFC hasn't even met about it. At least that's according to the legal notice that was in the paper, so unless he wants to throw his staff under the bus again for making a mistake. These are the instructions that your city manager is giving. This city council is, uh, this is not the council representing a city, this is a city manager with control issues, making decisions that force the council into votes that are nothing more than show. If this council doesn't add an item to the next agenda to help residents test their water and filter, you are saying you agree with not prioritizing the health and safety of children and seniors. I know where to find $4 million. You also are agreeing that with prioritizing downtime and urbanizing over safety of citizens and giving him another, uh, above-average view and raise would say just that. But then again, I see the council members and the city manager walking out.
Your time is up.
I need two more seconds, please, Council.
No, no.
Okay, I just, I hope you all.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Mr. Reynolds, would you please come up to the dais? I mean, the podium, please. Uh, this is my first time here and I'm looking at the council and, and, uh, our Youth Advisory Commission, this is important. This is the kind of meeting that you see because you will be here one day. So it's important to focus, listen to what's going on, and see how we react compared to what's coming at us. The first thing, the water bill and filter for water, did a, did a letter go out to residents for that?
That was a requirement of the rule, of the lead and copper rule that, uh, came out, yes, ma'am. It was required to send a letter out to the 2,512 residents that were identified to have had galvanized lines, uh, during our inventory. That's part of the requirement, so yes, that was sent out. Um, there's, uh, we'll have to do a repeat of that every year annually. Um, we're looking for a new rule to come out in 2027, which is probably gonna set a time limit for those homes to have those galvanized lines removed.
So for clarification, it's not the city of Colleen sending, but it's a mandate from who?
From the EPA. And the city of Colleen, we, we do pay 120 water to send those out, as, as per the federal rule that came out, yes, ma'am.
Yes, for the residents that this may be their first time hearing this and on TV, could you explain EPA, why we must do what they say?
Yes, EPA is a federal organization that governs how we do business when it comes to, uh, these, these, these type situations. They have a, a lead and copper rule out that was published by the EPA. Uh, they revised those rules back in 2021, and they revised them, and we had a requirement to go out and do a inspection inventory of all, uh, water lines within our distribution system on the private side as well as the public side. So we identified in that process, in that inventory, that there are no lead lines in our inventory on either side of the meter, the resident side or the city side, but there are galvanized lines on the resident side for 2,500 homes. We have, we have over 5,500 homes in our inventory. So to have 2,500 that have that, uh, galvanized lines is, we're looking at a small percentage, and we are working through those issues with those residents as we speak.
And I have a question about that, uh, about the 2,500, I know you said 5,025. What, what funding do EPA give the city to buy filters or water?
Uh, zero. We don't get funding from the EPA to do any of this, this is our responsibility. Um, this is, uh, and it's not just the city of Colleen, this is all cities, uh, kind of US-wide. This is not a Texas thing, this is not something that's mandated by the TCQ, it's mandated by the, uh, Environmental Protection Agency, which is a federal agency. So all cities are going through this. Um, a lot of cities, finally, do have lead lines. We were fortunate not to have lead lines, so I think we're ahead of the game in this rule, and we've done our part, we've done our due diligence, we've hired a third-party company that specializes in this, they're doing their due diligence, working with us to make sure we're meeting the requirements of the new rule. Uh, the rule has been revised, it's been revised several times, we're looking for the next revision, as I stated before, to come out in 2027, but I think it's counterpreposterous for us to think that we can go out and just provide water filters to everybody who has, has galvanized lines, that I'm gonna pass the common sense test. I don't know what Waco did, I haven't investigated that, I don't live in Waco, I don't work for Waco, but I know for us, we go out, we have done our due diligence, as per the rule, as per the federal mandate, we've done our due diligence, and we've met the, the, what the letter of the, of the law. And that's what we're required to do, that's what we continue to do, and, um, I will leave it at that.
Councilwoman Cobb. Mr. Reynolds, I've always found you to be an excellent person when it comes to the providing the care of citizens. Have there been any citizen in this county or in this city that have called your office and have said to you, I am suffering from some type of lead?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. And that, and that's likely not gonna happen, as I stated before, we hit, we are, we, it's only 10% of the, of the, of the public water systems in Texas that have a superior waters rating. The city of Colleen is part of that 10%, there's over 7,000 systems, we are part of that 700, that have a superior water rating. So people are not getting bad water. We have to notify them that there's a possibility of a galvanized line on their side of that meter. We cannot be responsible for what happens from that meter to that property owner's home, that's their responsibility, that's clearly known by most people. Um, so we, we're responsible for what we provide to that meter, and we've done our due diligence, we will work with those people, we have, I can tell you now, there's been 157 of those that have come off that list already, so we're down to 2,355 as I stand here today. So people are doing their part on their side. Um, so they need to hire a plumber, have him come down and look at it, investigate. In some of these places, they, because when they do the investigation, they realize that this, it's, it's, it's a galvanized thing, but it's, or it's just a 12-foot piece of, uh, pipe that needs to be replaced, they replace that and they're, they're golden. So I don't think that's a city's responsibility. So if we got 55,000 residents who are paying their water bill to keep our infrastructure going forward, I don't think those people should be taxed to go ahead and fix the, the, the private lines of the 2,500 property owners. So if you've got people who are renting these homes, and we're talking about people who are renters, that's what, what was discussed here by the resident, that property owner needs to be responsible for that, not the other residents of the city, and not the city of Colleen.
Thank you for that clarification. And the other topic, Mr. Kegel, the homeless shelter that, uh, it was a statement that made that the council is trying to push out, uh, the residents that are, we call them unsheltered, individuals that do not have a place to stay to an area that we do not want. This has been going into effect for a long time, this has been a planning process for a long time, it's just not something that the council just decided to do. Mr. Kegel, would you elaborate on that, especially for our, our young Youth Advisory Commission to understand this process?
Sure, if you recall, uh, we worked on a countywide solution, uh, or process to deal with the homeless issue, and that was one of the recommendations out of that study that we helped pay for, and we're implementing that study, that's part of what we're going through. So I, um, and, and we're working with our, our current homeless provider, and they're working with us as well, and they approve of this process.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kegel. With that being said, there's no more questions. Mr. Cameron Cochran, you have four minutes.
This is on the wall inside the city council. There was a council member who, uh, I've been here two hours, hasn't apologized for making some rude comments to a citizen, but let's continue, I want to talk about water, 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 water. I'm gonna move this out of the way because there's a photographer who loves taking my photo. Water, uh, people may not know that for the past 14 years, a company known as Biochem Lab has been testing the city water and the wastewater at a cost of $69,000. Again, 14 years. Tonight, the city council is now looking at another company known as 120 Water. This new company is gonna have a contract to also test lead and copper at a cost of Well, the, uh, previous company, Biochem, uh, their company contract expires in 2025, they test for lead, copper, chloroform, and E. coli, so I don't know why we're spending $59,000 on a second company if it's already being done. I was strangely, uh, odd that during the actual presentation, no council member had any questions about the city council's problem with lead or anything like that, but since they have no questions, I wrote up some, maybe they can answer tonight. Uh, basically, I've noticed that clay pipes, there was a resident who spoke about clay pipes in her area, uh, there was nothing in the presentation about clay pipes. Is that because they don't want to address it at this time, or is that because, again, it's on the homeowner? Uh, also, I noticed in the map, there was no map for, that showed the 2,512 places where these residents live in Colleen. Is it one little community, is it communities around the city? Who knows, there's no map, there's no transparency in the city council. Uh, the water and wastewater plan that was approved for this year, that cost us, oh, how much was that one? $251,000. Uh, is there something in there that talks about the lead line pipes? Probably not, since this is something new, apparently the EPA just found. Also, uh, my question is, how many homes have backflow testing issues? Well, if they're not paying for the backflow testing, what makes you think they're gonna pay to fix their own pipes without the city's help? Let's move on to DS 24073, the annual evaluation about the manager. When you go back and talk behind closed doors about your city manager, I want to remind you of several things. In January 2024, an audit revealed that the Colleen developer fees were uncollected. The city lost an estimated $30,000 under the watchful eye of our city manager. An audit in February 2024 indicated the city overpaid its water rates since 2007, an estimated $288,000 was lost, or who knows where it went, they supposedly received it back. I asked for clarification on that, never received it. Let's move on. Another audit in June 2024 showed that the city departments under the city manager also failed to collect fines associated with abandoned property and the lawn care of those homes. The city lost an estimated $260,000 in revenue. Uh, recently in October, the city was faced with a ransomware cyber attack. I guess the city manager, who's supposed to be in charge of all the different departments, failed to, uh, secure the computer network. What else? 45 seconds left. Let me just say, for all these reasons, in my opinion, the city manager constantly makes mistakes. I don't know why we keep him here, he's lived beyond his life of working for this city, he needs to move on, he's already lost several thousands of dollars this year, he's having a devastating impact on the city. Please do not keep him in his position, thank you very much.
Mr. Reynolds, is there anything you want to say on that? Because I know there was some misinformation put out. And Councilor, Mr. Reynolds is commenting, we, Mr. Kegel is our city manager, he will be receiving this evaluation. Every time the evaluation happened, this is the process. Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
No, ma'am, I mean, with all due respect, Madam Mayor, I think we've addressed this issue from every angle, we've addressed the issue where the public can, can understand it. Uh, we got a lot of new citizens here today, uh, that wouldn't benefit from any further comment about this issue.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sean Price, you have four minutes. Thank you, Ms. Janelle, for putting that back on the wall.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can't get myself together. Evening, City Council.
Good evening, Mr. Price.
So as I go down here, I'm gonna be brief and just ask the questions that never get answered. I'm just that guy that nobody cares, well, there's a few of y'all that will actually endeavor to answer a question that I, I propose, but it's usually not the case. So for, um, I, are we gonna, PR 24030, we can't do that yet, is that, am I correct, since that hasn't already occurred?
Mr. Price, if it's on the agenda, you can talk about it.
Okay, well, my, my question, because the judge is not here, so it's actually for him, is I was just wondering for the, um, for the youth program that he has going on at the, uh, the court trial systems for juveniles, I was just wondering what, uh, what the cost per child was for that program? So that was the question for that, even, you know, maybe I can ask it again when he shows up. Um, for the semi, the capital improvement advisory committee report, um, there is no addendum for unfunded items, right? So the items that were put on or there for capital improvement that were, that fell off are unfunded. I can't find those or locate those items that were unfunded. For RS 24216, for the $116,000, I can understand that we spend it, but that property should actually go over to the new city hall, since we're gonna build, or we're looking, or asking $154 million to build a new city hall next year. So all that equipment should actually be included into that price. If not, I'm just wondering, um, the failures and glitches, is, how many of those were attributed to competency? Was it failure in, you know, in-user? In-user problem that created the issue, or was it, you know, actual hardware failure? With the, uh, software, the RS 24217, the Solidway software, um, we do understand that it's not $86,048 this year, it's $95,000 when you average it out per year for the total cost for the next five years. It's $95,000 a year for five years. Um, that's, that's, that's a little expensive for a software program for a truck to drive around. Hmm, it's a trash truck. I don't, I don't know it's that complicated, but I get it. And the double expenditure for, um, the $59.20 for the, the water service for lead and stuff, if this is to continue for a new company, okay, I got it, but I just, it's, you know, how many tests are we running? Is this a daily test? This is 365 days a year? We test the water every day? Seems a little excessive or expensive to test the water every, I mean, but if we're doing it every day, I, I appreciate it, thank you. Um, and then, um, last, my question down here is, uh, RS 24220, is that, again, what has not been funded? funded out of the mission agenda for the city's drainage master plan, right? Does that include for my neighborhood, the $360,000 that was voted not to be funded last year and this year?
Thank you, sir, your time is up. With that being said, Judge, you going to come up and do your presentation, like, after The system for our city hall, the city does not pay for that. That is funded through a grant, but we don't pay for that at all. The drainage plant, every city, as Mr. Uriel said, or Mr. Reynolds, I'm not sure which one, we have to go and update our plans. Flood plan, drainage plan, any plan that we have, the city is growing, so you got to update those. And if I forget something, it's just because I left my glasses. The lead, EPA, he went through it, Mr. Reynolds, in detail, why we must do that. It's mandated by the federal government. So if it's lead, there's some things you have to do, and we need a contract with a company that'll come in and assist with that process. We got to do it. We can't get away from it. And for the youth program, the justice piece, I mean, not justice, but Judge Krishner will answer that. All right. With that being said, the next person, Leo Gukhaisen. You have four minutes. And because of the item that's on the agenda, that's why this citizen comment taking a long time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Madam Mayor, pro temp, council members, city manager, Mr. Cagle, and fellow residents. In economics, a sunk cost is any cost that has already been paid and cannot be recovered. The sunk cost fallacy is a mistake in reasoning in which a sunk cost of an activity intended of the future cost and benefit were considered when deciding whether to continue the activity. The sunk cost facade, excuse me, makes it more likely that a person or organization continues with an activity in which they have already invested money, time, and effort in, even if they would not start the activity had they not already invested in it. The greater size of the sunk investment, the more people tend to invest further, and even when the returns on added investments appear not to have been worthwhile. This trap is sometimes described as throwing good money after bad because of the resources and effort already lost on matters that have already been taken care of. That comes from an article, Sunk Cost, Throwing Good Money After Bad, March 21, written by Lee Grumbow. So that leads me to my topic for today about the media. In 2019, equipment was bought from Rush Works, now ENCO, for thousands of dollars to support the city council chamber upgrade. Now staff reports that the current equipment has failed intermittently during live broadcasts and recording efforts. I personally think that they are being a little generous by saying intermittently. Staff now states that the current vendor, Rush Work slash ENCO, has proven to be highly qualified with extensive experience and successful performance record. Staff also recommends to approve the procurement of new equipment from the same company in the amount of $166,065. So if I have this straight, we bought thousands of dollars of equipment from this company in 2019. Now the equipment is failing within five years of buying the equipment. And now staff, who this body refers to as experts, want to go out and spend another $166,065 for equipment from the same company that we bought the faulty equipment from To me and to other residents, that doesn't make, it makes no sense. You're throwing good money after bad into a system. So why are we going to reward this company with another $166,000 of funds? Yes, it's not taxed, it comes from a grant, but that's besides the point. It's tax money, if you look at, no matter how way you look at it, it's tax money. We get it from the federal government as a grant, it's still our tax money that we pay yearly. So why are we going to reward this company with the opportunity to fail again? Five years is not a long time. It's not, this stuff is not used daily 24/7. So is there, was there a warranty or something on the property, the products we bought? Can we not use the warranty? Why pay these people more money for faulty equipment? Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. The second person is Sue DeBose. You have four minutes.
Hey, well, as uncomfortable as this makes me, I'm here again because I felt I needed to represent my Yow Ranch neighbors. Just because most people can't leave work at 3:00 PM on a Tuesday afternoon does not mean that most people support the Featherline rezoning. They do not. You all received the Featherline rezoning opposition petition with over 500 signatures. Those 534 signatures weren't just an online click. They represent an in-person effort by every single person listed. But if a one-click survey means more to you, you can look at the Colleen Daily Herald's poll, in which only 14% of nearly 300 respondents favored this rezoning. And half of those yes responses included the caveat that the Featherline Improvement Project be moved up. So actually, less than 7% of respondents picked the option that said, quote, "Yes, the city staff recommends approval and developers have met city requirements," end quote. That seems to be the city council's go-to answer, but yet, less than 7% of constituents pick that answer. Hmm. I'm sorry, he's not sitting there. You've probably heard the infamous Walmart greeter versus Supreme Court justice statement made by Councilman Oliver, as in social media. While insulting to Mr. Seals, this statement is also insulting to any constituent who may have a different opinion than the city council, and it's insulting to anyone in a low-wage job. But what is most important to me is that it concisely showed the level of reverence the city council has for their staff. Apparently, the city's staff outrank all of you. They outrank all the citizens. They outrank the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've been told that we just have a difference of opinion, and specifically, the Planning and Zoning Commission's conclusions are just a recommendation. Well, if it's just a recommendation, why do you need a supermajority to override them? Seems like their opinion may be a little more important than what you want to acknowledge. My big question is, this council has continuously avoided answering the question of why this rezoning has to happen now. If you vote yesterday for the rezoning, you are favoring one landowner over hundreds of constituents who are also property owners, who've made it clear that we're against rezoning at this time due to infrastructure and safety concerns. I have nothing personal against the landowner, and I'm not against homes being built on that land if they don't make an area even more unsafe. I'm not here to argue about what type of homes should be built, or how many should be built, or how long it will take to build them, given the current market and so forth. I'm here because Featherline Road, at its current capacity, is unsafe. Driving on it is unsafe. Walking on it is unsafe. Residents can't pull in and out of Yow Ranch safely. No one can walk safely along the rutted side of that narrow road. Adding to the current road conditions, the traffic necessary for all the steps needed after rezoning and before building houses is unconscionable. You all have been so careful to say things like Featherline will be widened before any homes are occupied on the rezoned property. Occupied homes aren't the only issue. The Preserve at Thousand Oaks, east of Yow Ranch on Stagecoach, isn't building homes yet, but they regularly closed down a lane on Stagecoach during the pre-building process. How's that going to work on Featherline? May I ask for just a little more time?
You have to ask the count. You're allowed until you stop.
I know. Okay, I've got two paragraphs. Okay.
But, oh, ma'am, your time is up.
Can I have one more minute, please?
Request it from the council.
May I have more one minute, please?
Yeah, you have one minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. You set the clock for one minute.
All right. So the Preserve at Thousand Oaks, east of Yow Ranch on Stagecoach, isn't building homes yet, but they have regularly closed a lane on Stagecoach during the pre-building process. I live there. I tried to go out that way to avoid Featherline. It's the truth. How will that work on Featherline when there's only two lanes, or when Featherline's in the process of being widened? I mean, you talk about occupied homes, that's not what I'm worried about. It's all the traffic that even planning for homes is going to cause. I really, really hope at least two of you are listening tonight. Please, two people, that's all we need. Don't bet our future safety on how long it takes to widen a road, or how long it takes to plan and build houses. Widening Featherline Road before approving this rezoning is the only responsible option. Otherwise, tell us why. Why does it have to be right now? Because we don't get it. Please vote no on this rezoning.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. James Seals. If anybody else put in, if you have to go, parents, if you have to take your youth home, I mean, that's fine, too. But after Mr. Seals, I was going to take a break because I didn't want to be disrespectful to him or anybody else speaking. Good afternoon, good evening, sir. It's evening time now. You have four minutes.
I'm here on behalf of 534 people who signed a petition to oppose this rezoning. I provided the opposition packet and petition at the last meeting. When a zoning case comes to the council, it isn't simply choosing between residential, industry, or commercial. The city's, or the council's duty is to abide by the guidelines in Farr versus Tippett in Section 211.004. Of greatest importance is compliance with the comp plan. This case is not compliant, and the packet goes into great detail as to why. First and foremost, the comp plan states the city should encourage mixed-use complete neighborhoods and large lot rural estates for new greenfield development. This case has neither. Secondly, complete neighborhoods are defined as a mix of housing and small commercial, parks and public space, and amenities within a safe and walkable distance. Apple Mart is not an amenity, and children shouldn't have to walk one and a half miles to go to a park in Thousand Oaks. The staff is stating lot size is housing diversity, and that is not factual. Llewellyn and Prairie View are R1, and Yow is a PUD with only R1. From the comp plan paraphrased, diversity of housing type is directly tied to affordability. Middle housing comprises the range of housing styles that fall between the extremes of detached single homes and mid-rise apartment complexes. These housing styles include townhomes, duplexes, and live-work units, and will be an essential part of Colleen's fiscally sustainable future. This area is centered between three schools, and yet none of the housing is affordable for a single-income teacher who wants to live near where they work, a single-income parent of a student who wants to attend these schools, or a low-ranking single soldier wanting to escape apartment lifestyles. Five to 10% of this development should include middle housing, small commercial, and parks. This is not a complete neighborhood. It doesn't diversify housing mixes, isn't inclusive, it doesn't include walkable parks or amenities, it doesn't shift the market to existing housing, and it doesn't improve mobility or connectivity. This case is not fiscally responsible. In fact, this case goes against everything the comp plan is pushing for the city to change in their zoning guidelines. In order to be fiscally sustainable to cover future infrastructure needs, parcels need to generate $7,000 per acre. This case will not hit that mark. The city staff showed an inflated revenue per acre because they do not factor in DV exemptions, which averages 57% of exemptions. Even factoring in a lower 40% rate, the city won't even hit $5,000 per acre for $350,000-priced homes. There are zero subdivisions in this city with no DV exemptions. They impact revenue every single time and should be accounting for. Lastly, the comp plan states, paraphrased, "Most developers build subdivisions. Developers focus on building exclusively new single-family homes for entry-level buyers hurts Colleen's ability to offer a wider variety of options to residents, both in price and type. The result, it pulls demand away from the resale and reinvestment market. It also pushes the city further into a financial hole by adding more service and infrastructure liabilities than the tax-based support." Today, 534 people and I are telling you this zoning infringes on our safety and well-being. For District Two and Three council members, this petition is your constituents' voices. For all of you, do you know Colleen's identity values listed in the comp plan? One, diversity and inclusion. Two, safe neighborhoods. Three, sense of family. Four, service and stewardship of our community. This is your opportunity to show the community you care about diversity, diversity or inclusion of middle-income residents. You truly care about safe neighborhoods by not allowing two simultaneous construction efforts. You strengthen the sense of family between the city and community by listening to our concerns, and you reward the service and stewardship of this community by disapproving this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other residents that feel that a comment form that I did not call? All right. We're going to, who raised their hand? Sir, I have, Mr. Robert, I have you for public comment. I have you for public hearing, but if you want, did you mean for it to be citizen comments? Mr. Cochran. First one for disrupting me while I was speaking to them, first one. So, sir, I will call y'all during public comment. With that being said, we will take a five-minute break.
Councilmember Adams, councilmember, oh, that's everyone. All right. So with that being said, before we took our break, some council members had something they wanted to say, and I'm going to go with Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. As a reminder, I know that was referenced to the District Three and District Two council members who represent citizens, as I represent citizens in District Four for West Colleen. We each roughly represent about 40,000 people. Forty thousand. And so when we're making decisions up here, we do have to look at the larger picture. And so I did just want to note that for a second. Thank you.
And what council member, for the ones at home and the residents that's new, whatever decision is made at this diocese, it takes four votes. Two people are just not responsible for what happens. Just two more people, if they decide to go that route, it takes four votes to move anything. Any other council members before I move forward? All right, Judge Krishner. Counsel, I've spoken to Judge Krishner, as you asked me to. He will just be talking about the diversion program on his update. That was a question that was asked by a resident, and the rest of them are in your slide deck. Good evening, Judge.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, pro temp, council members, I see a manager. Thank you for having me this afternoon. Okay, when I have you to the mist court briefing, let's see, this is between April 2024 and September 2024. Because you wanted me to go quickly, I just want to refer to the youth diversion plan Because you wanted me to go quickly, I just want to refer to the youth diversion plan and possibly the teen court program if I have time. So the youth diversion program is mandated by the state legislature back in a couple years ago during the last legislature. House Bill 3186 was enacted and goes into effect on January 1st, 2025. Now, this is the Texas Youth Diversion and Early Intervention Act. Now, this program goes into effect in an effort to give 10- to 16-year-olds the opportunity to avoid criminal prosecution for non-traffic-related cases and prevent further criminal conduct from occurring without imposing a fine or punishment that's unrelated to the child's accountability and rehabilitation. Now, the goal of our diversion plan is to match available services to the child based on the child's needs. There's a lot of different ways we can approach these diversion situations, mentoring, counseling, mental health screening, tutoring, drug and alcohol testing. We're trying to really reduce recidivism with these kind of cases. Now also, as I said before, this new program is scheduled to begin at January 1st, 2025. Now, we have met, we've already developed the program, we've actually tested the program throughout the last portion of the year, and we have the plan in place, what we want to do now. Now, there's two programs that we have. We have the intermediate diversion program. This is for cases that are not filed with the court yet. This is before the cases are filed with the court. So this is between the juvenile case manager and the city prosecutor. They can do the diversion with the children if they agree to do this with their parents. They don't have to do it, but if they want to, it's a way that they have the cases not filed with the court, the cases just go away if they successfully complete the diversion program. Now, once the cases do get filed, if they get filed, the other way to do diversion is the diversion by judge. That's, as they come before myself or Judge Simmons, as judges in the court, we can give them the diversion program if they agree to do it and with their parent. If they decide not to, they do have the right to go to trial, just like any other adult Now, the one good thing about the diversion program, like I said, is this is to try to keep kids out of the criminal justice system. And that's the whole purpose, because in the criminal justice system, when you're a young person, that kind of stays with you. Even if you get the case expunged, sometimes the stigma stays with you, and sometimes if you get more than one violation, then you cannot get that expunged. So there's a lot of times, and even if you're a juvenile, you want to keep these things off your record. We want to be able to keep children as much as we can out of the criminal justice system for these kind of offenses. Now, this is not affect traffic-related offenses. That, this is not applied to those. So for traffically-related offenses, they'll still have to come to court and plea and do something else. One of the things they can do is the teen court program. This is for the traffic-related offenses. Now, we once had a traffic, teen court program here in the Cleveland Court that ended during COVID, and we want to bring that back. Now, at this point, it's just aspirational. Now, at this point, I'm trying to work with KISD to give the opportunity to KISD students to participate, to learn about the criminal justice system, the way the court works, and to actually work and volunteer as student attorneys and jurors, and that way they can get more involved. And if they choose in the future to go to college, go to law school, they'll have a lot of knowledge, and they'll have things they can put on their applications for volunteerism and recommendations, things like that. This is to benefit them, but to also benefit juvenile defendants, because the juvenile defendants, we want to reduce the recidivism for the juvenile offenders, so they'll participate in it as well. And also, we want to increase the interest in illegal professions to the KIS students, and also maybe juvenile defendants as well, if they see this is something that, hey, maybe I can do this as well in terms of being in the criminal justice system. Now, I think my time is about up. That's really what I wanted to focus on, and are there any questions?
Yes, sir, one other question. Thank you for that quick overview. Counsel, we will bring him back before his evaluation to go in more detail with it, and All right, so could you go over one more thing I want to ask you? Is this program free? That's one.
Which program?
The diversion program.
Youth diversion, youth diversion, the program itself, it's not free, there's a fee for it. The fee is $10, but it's not mandatory. If the defendant and the defendant's family cannot afford to pay it, then they wouldn't have to pay it, but if they can afford to pay it, they would pay it.
So the judge by order, if you make them go, do the court pick up that $10 fee?
Well, yes, because they wouldn't have to pay it if they cannot afford to.
That's not my question. If you make, if you, if you, the judge, make it mandatory that they have to go to it, do they have to pay the $10 fee compared to a child and parent decide prior to coming to court, we'll just go through the program? But then, once they go and decide, no, I don't want to go through the program now, you say, no, I want you to go through it, do the court pay that $10 fee?
Well, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, it doesn't work that way.
That's not what I asked, the question is, do the court pay? Yes or no? Are you saying no?
I'm trying to understand your question, that I can answer it, because this is something that I cannot make them do. This is an agreement. This is a contract between the court and the juvenile and their parent. If they decide they want to go to it, to give them, tell them exactly what's going to happen, if they choose to do it, they do it. If they choose not to do it, they don't have to. I can't say you have to do this. It's an agreement.
Go back to, go back on your slide, right there.
Okay.
By judge.
Yes.
If you tell them they have to go to the program, you require them to go. Can you require them to go?
I cannot.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Anyone else have any more questions? Thank you.
Oh, there's one more thing, Madam Mayor. There was a question earlier from a citizen about the teen court fee. The teen court fee is a $20 fee, and that's mandated by the state legislature, it's a $20 fee. So if anyone wants to participate in teen court, they have to pay a $20 fee. If not, if they cannot afford the $20 fee, then the fee can be waived.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Madam Secretary, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Woman 24028, RS 24215, RS 24216, RS 24217, RS 24218, RS 24219, RS 24220.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Councilmember Solomon.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I second that motion.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, we will now have our public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. PH 24047, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Ian Holdings LLC on behalf of Arcade News Incorporated, case number Z 2427, to rezone approximately one acre out of Lot 1, Block 1, West Side Commercial subdivision from CUP Community Unit Plan with B3 local business district uses to B4 business district. The subject property is locally addressed as 2200 West Central Texas Expressway, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately one acre being part of Lot 1, Block 1, West Side Commercial subdivision from CUP Community Unit Plan with B3 local business district uses to B4 business district, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Revaughn has gone through these slides, would you like for him to go back through them? All right, is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am, would you like to speak? Would you please state your name for the record?
Hello, I'm Jennifer Novelli. I am the Group Property Development and Facilities Manager for EAN Holdings. We operate Enterprise National and Alamo in central and west Texas, and this is Zach Nemec, he's a facility specialist.
What's his name?
Zach Nemec. He is a facility specialist for us as well, and I just want to thank you for your consideration. We're very excited about this property. I don't know, I gave her something to pass out, and I think she gave it to you, but it shows that this property is, that's it. It is, the goal is to move our existing rental car location that's located at 900 South WS Young, so that it has its own property, and then replace it with a brand-new business to Colleen, which is the enterprise car sales, where we would sell our vehicles once they're done with rental. So that would add with 12 jobs to the city of Colleen, and just more ways for us to serve the community.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Hold a public hearing, the public hearing is open. I do not have anyone that put in a form to speak on this item, and I will go through Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Bill, yes, it is a surprise. I actually was going to withdraw my request, but the applicant raised a point that makes me question. So for car rental, I don't know why it had to be before to begin with, and then she said something about making it a car sales. So will this be the location where there are car sales or car rental? If it's car rental, I really don't care one way or the other, but do we really need another car sales place along veterans? I don't think we do. Part of the job of the council, whether you like it or not, is to actually make the decision about how our city looks, what it looks like as you're driving through, which is why you pass the ordinance with all of the walls, saying you have to have all of these walls, these fences, these barriers in between commercial and residential along the roadway, if you've got a subdivision, in between various restrictiveness of zoning. You're already making decisions, you have all the architectural requirements, you make decisions every week about how the city looks. Zoning is no different. Doesn't matter if it's this, if it's housing, we should be caring about what it looks like as you drive down through our main thoroughfares, do we need another car dealership?
Public hearing is closed. If the applicant would like to address that, you have opportunity to speak again. Because it's all about clarity to me, because we have a lot of things that's thrown in the atmosphere, and that doesn't make it correct. Yes, ma'am, please speak.
If this were not to pass, 900 South WS Young is still an enterprise rental car, and it's still an enterprise truck rental, so the look doesn't change at all, it's just a different enterprise operating there. And that is also not the property that we're talking about. The property we're talking about is a car rental facility, not car sales.
Yes, ma'am, I thought I heard you correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you for that clarification. Speaking to concern of how the city looks, we could target banks, but banks like to be located off the interstate where possible. In business, especially in commercial real estate, you do what are called void analysis to see where the demand is, and I get that. Just along 14, we got First Texas Bank, Extraco, First National, Bank of America, Chase, Cadence Bank, amongst others, you know? And so it's just, it's a whole different market that we can't regulate and determine where we want banks at, let alone car dealerships. So I did want to say that this is a phenomenal location, meeting a need, if you look on the side for commerce. So those are just my points on it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I second.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary.
PH 24048, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z 2428, to rezone part of Lot 3, Block 55, Colleen Original Edition, from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 113 West Avenue B, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of Lot 3, Block 55, Colleen Original, from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Revaughn has gone through the slides, would you like for him to go back through the slides? No? All righty. Is the, Mr. Revaughn, that's PH-24-048, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Adams.
I second the motion, Madam Mayor.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 24050, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Quintero Engineering on behalf of Fanex Properties LLC, case number Z 2430, to rezone approximately 12.033 acres out of the John SRA survey, abstract number 296561611, 714 through 1611, 714 through 1911, and the M Tongate survey, abstract number 8327753, from R1 Single Family Residential District, and RMH Residential Mobile Home District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 3210 Florence Road, Colleen, Texas, requires a three-fourth majority vote. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 12.033 acres out of the John SRA survey, abstract number 296561611, 714 through 1611, 714 through 1911, and the M Tongate survey, abstract number 8327753, from R1 Single Family Residential District, and RMH Residential Mobile Home District to R2 Two-Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Revaughn went through it, the slides, would you like for him to go back through it? All right, okay. Is the applicant here? Has, sir, would you like, okay, come on up and state your name.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I would kindly ask the council to grant me an extra minute, if y'all will, all right. All right.
Hey, sir, you have to use your forefurs before we can grant that one.
You got it.
It's just protocol.
Hey, well, thank you for having me tonight. We're excited about this property. I'm gonna get up here and say the standard stuff. We're excited about this property. It matches the comp plan. Staff supports it. Our great codes will defend on how this development would go. But what I do want to say, what's changed? We brought this earlier this year. And what's changed from earlier this year till now is we've literally... Our owner bought a piece of tract that's at the end of King Court, which allows us access to develop the entirety of the 12 acres, where before, we weren't able to do that. So now, as part of this development, and that opening up the access and the density of what we're trying to do, I'm up here because I've... I know I've met with Mr. Rogers. It was kind of last minute. I said, "Mr. Rogers, I'm not trying to change your mind. I'm not trying to work with you. I'm just trying to tell you the facts. Here are... Here's what's different. I've never met Mr. Cano or Ms. Griffin, but in my meeting with Mr. Rogers, one thing that I understood is... And I brought this. I made this exhibit. Right here, there's 2.35 acres. Mr. Rogers thought it was green space and trees. But this 2.35 acres is a zone for residential mobile homes. Based on this RMH, which is not even the code, guys. It's like goes back to 1972. It allows for mobile home parks. We have got our access, and we can develop 10 units per acre, close to 20. Like, these... I feel for the residents, and that's why I'm up here trying to be... Just present the facts. Do you want a mobile home as your backyard? Or would you accept duplex? Now, the duplex property, guys, y'all know the zoning. Y'all know subdivision. Y'all have standards that protect how this develops. The traffic will be directed to Florence Road and King's Court. There's dividing fence lines. There's protection to the residents that live there now. Otherwise, they're not gonna get that. And you know what? I'll say this. I know some of the applicants may talk about how beautiful the land is, and it's green, and the animals. Well, guess what? They didn't buy it. My client owns it. And if you walk on the land without permission, it's called trespassing. You can look at it from a distance, take a picture. But here's the deal. I'm not trying to like go there, but I am. The... I want to go there, and I want to make it a big deal because, hey, I know it's where they live. It's their backyard. And how do you preserve what they have? Well, right now, based on the way it sits today, guys, and we secured access to this place, they can be seen up to 20... If you take the density from the trailer home park just south of us and lay it out, it's a perfect rectangle. Look at this. Like right there? If you take these trailer homes that are here and you like drop it in there, we're looking at about 20 mobile homes that we could put up there. Yeah, engineering studies will have to be done. Based on your subdivision regulations, we, as a professional engineer and one that's developed in the city, we... I don't see how we cannot... How we wouldn't be able to do that. I know Mr. Rogers claims to be an engineer. And you know what? His concerns about floodplain and grading and drainage. I took it back, looked at them, analyzed it against your code. And guess what? Your code that you adopted addresses all those things very effectively. I am a licensed state engineer. I would challenge you to challenge someone who claims to be an engineer if they are licensed in the state of Texas. I would ask you to ask them if they realize what the situation is for what it is.
Sir, your time is up. This is where you request a minute.
Can I request another minute?
Counsel?
I would...
Madam Secretary, please set the clock for one minute.
I asked the council to ask those that are coming up here to speak on this if they realize that access... Our client has been given access, and it's RMH. And if they want a mobile home to be their backyard. You would vote for it because this case complies with your comprehensive plan. Staff supports it. It's a higher-density development. You won't vote against it. You can vote against it if you want a mobile home park. That's all I have. I asked if you have any questions for me after they get up for clarification. I would love to share what I know about this project with you. Thank you for your time.
Sir, could you please state your name for the record, please?
Pedro Quintero. Man, where'd that come from? Right here. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Robert Villaronga. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Ma'am, my name is Robert Villaronga. Many of y'all know my father. Many of y'all have actually sat at my parents' desk and their tables and asked them for assistance and guidance. And I'm gonna be short. I'm just gonna ask you...
Sorry, sir. She hadn't started the clock.
I'm so sorry. Am I not speaking loud enough?
No, you're fine. Do you need to shave it off?
No, I'm fine. Apologies.
Okay, sir, you can start.
Thank you. My name is Robert Villaronga. Y'all have seeked out my father's and my mother's counsel many times, and I'm just gonna be very short. This is my neighborhood. I remember this was 12 years ago. And I remember my father speaking about this, and I listened to him because I didn't know what they were talking about. And he was like in agreement with not rezoning. I'm just gonna ask y'all to... If y'all knew my father, and if y'all talked about that. He was the mayor. He even... The Youth Advisory Committee. I think he was the... 31 years ago, he made that a reality. His name is on the court systems. Y'all respected him, and y'all know him. And I'm speaking for him and my mother. Please vote no. Thank you.
Mr. John Russell. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. My name is John Russell. I've been sitting here, and I'm listening to this. And first thing I want to talk about is I was strongly opposed to rezoning. It's heavy. I have lived over in Turleban for 30 years, okay? I'm a retired sergeant major. And I say this. I think we used to have meetings where we would say, "We're just here to check the block." And I think right now, we're kind of at that point where we're just checking the block. I'm not gonna read everything I had here because I think we had one of them check-the-block moments. And after listening to the gentleman about the mobile home, it's kind of like, okay, you want this, or you want that? Well, I don't want either, okay? So I'm just gonna say, like I said, the letters that came out about the rezoning, I've received two. And every time I got them, it was too late. And I went around and talked to most of the peoples in the neighborhood, and half of the people didn't even get the letter. So they said they sent them out. And I did get it. But by the time I got it, it was too late to do anything, okay? Now, while I understand the need for housing, I believe this change will have a negative effect on our community. If you look... We have an area that I call Catabrane Street. There's a lot of crime over there. I even talked to the police, and a couple of police officers told me that's a high-crime area, okay? Putting the mobile duplexes in, of course, it's gonna increase the crime rate as well. Putting mobile homes would be worse. But it's a double-edged sword. But I propose against both of the items. However, if we're... If you're gonna do that, if you're gonna approve it, I think that we should at least decide and make sure it's designed to the highest standard. You know, maybe fences, maybe, you know, the street wide enough. Everybody knows where Lowe's Boulevard is. You can't even drive down there because they only put enough room for cars. You had to go in the middle of the street just to get by there. Now, I hope they don't have it like that. You know, maybe make room for parking, more adequate parking, more spaces in the back. But I oppose it. And I have at least 75 signatures on the petition as well. But I want to thank you all because what you do is a hard job. I wouldn't want to do it. So it's up to you. And I hope you oppose it, but it obviously is up to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melissa Brown, four minutes. Counsel.
Someone's speaking.
So I don't care if you represent 40,000 people or if you're at large and you represent 160,000 people. That's not the point, is it? The point is, is it good for the district? And is it good for the city as a whole? Is it good for that immediate surrounding community? Because that's what we're supposed to be building, right? Is communities, not just neighborhoods, not just new subdivisions. I think it's really cute. Mr. Quintero had a good idea coming in here and saying, "Well, we could put 20 mobile homes in there. Look at the map. Not even a quarter of it is zoned for mobile home. The vast majority of it is actually zoned for R1. It's a little square, little rectangle. You're not gonna put 20 mobile homes on that little plot of land." As a matter of fact, you can't put 30 single-family houses on the entire parcel of land because, as your professional pointed out to you, it would go against fire code. 15 duplexes is the top, not close to 20, like Mr. Quintero was saying. 15 is the maximum. But then you look at it, okay, so there's gonna have to be a big enough cul-de-sac or turnaround for a fire truck or an ambulance to get through. It was less than a year ago when the same thing went to planning and zoning. They were told, "No, we recommend disapproval of it then." Came to the council. The council said, "You know, we're not gonna bother voting on it right now because there was no way at that point you could actually approve it." So you said, "Go back and compromise with the citizens and then come back." Well, failing to vote yes on it and voting to approve it is essentially the same thing as voting to disapprove it because you didn't say, "We're voting to table it for X amount of days, times, months, anything like that." It should have had to wait for a full year before it came back anyway. 10% approximately of the immediate surrounding neighbors said, "We don't want this. We don't think it's good for the environment. We don't think it's good for safety. We don't think it's good for traffic." Do y'all live right there? No. Do you live with the consequences of it every day? No. How often are you over there visiting? This is right around in that same area where Mr. Boyd invited two moms to come in to tell us about how their daughters have been killed on Tremere Road. And that still hasn't been taken care of, that safety issue. But yet, I heard you come up with every single excuse, every single reason about why you can justify Featherline coming up next. Not a single justification for this, other than, "Well, there is already a mix of housing in that area. It's not just all R1." This isn't safe. It's not laid out for that. Actually, the request from the residents wasn't, "Don't build anything." It was, "Hey, come back with a PUD, even though PUD isn't required for a parcel this size, I understand, but put it in a PUD and guarantee us that that part that is closest to those R1s where those stars are would be a parkland. And then you put 15 duplexes on the front end of it." Right now, you can't guarantee that anymore than you could guarantee the sidewalks on Tremere at the apartment complex that, oh, surprise, are not there.
Councilmember Boitt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to put this out there. 108 Nancy Drive is one street away from this development, from Turtle Creek. I used to live there. I'm familiar with this area very well. So again, the prevailing uses, what's neighboring it. Again, it pretty much makes sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. James Rogers. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. James Rogers here. I live right next to this development. It's been a 12-year battle. 12 years ago, the city, previous city council, disapproved this on the issues of safety and other reasons. A few months ago, the proposal came to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the previous Planning and Zoning Commission, who voted unanimously no. It came to you at that time. And Madam Mayor, you may remember. And Councilman Segarra, you said to the developer, "Go back and coordinate, compromise with the citizens." I can tell you right now, that didn't happen at all. They did not compromise at all. As a matter of fact, when I had this meeting with them last week, a week ago, finally, because I had emailed them in April, and they decided not to reply. When I eat... When I met them last week, they said they would try to build as many as possible. And I quote that. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, a month ago, also voted unanimously no. So my reasons for my opposition to this... The first is safety. These little tiny roads, and as you know, with duplexes, people park all over the place. There's four or five cars in one duplex. And then it's on the street. If you go down Lowe's Boulevard, you'll see that. There's three lanes. One of them, you can't even go on. You have to go in the middle lane. A safety issue, especially if there's a fire truck going down there, which is much bigger than a garbage truck. And currently, right now, the garbage trucks that go down into this area have to back into it. The second reason I have is environmental. Yes, there are animals there. There is a fox. There is a skunk. There is a possum family and hoot owls. Where are they gonna go? Somewhere. But you're taking away their habitat. The second part of that environmental is in the back portion of this development is a creek. And yes, I have trespassed on that land. Everybody has. And I went back there. And if you see this land, it is an 100-year floodplain. And my credentials as an engineer include my graduation from the United States Military Academy at West Point. I'm a retired Army officer and a degree in engineering and public administration. I know what I'm talking about with development. The last part is compromise. Quintero Engineering, as you requested way back in May, was to compromise. They did not. So I'm gonna hold the council to this. I and my neighbors are on the moral high ground. I'm inviting you to join me in the moral high ground and say no to this development. Make Quintero Engineering wait a year and then work with the citizens as they should have so we get a compromise. This is what you told them to do. They did not do it. So I'm incensed, first of all, about someone impinging on my background as an engineer. That's unfair. And you know who I am. So the green space is gone. We have no more green space in this area. And quite frankly, I called their bluff about the mobile homes. It's a little tiny quarter of space. Can I have another minute, please?
Counsel, can he have another minute?
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, would you start the one minute as soon as he start talking? Thank you.
This guidance that we get from the city council has not been followed. The staff is in collusion with this group because the actual change today was not presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the small amount of individual duplexes to be built. I'm sorry. I'm a little upset right now because it seems that Quintero Engineering is playing on the old development scheme. And that's not fair. I'm a citizen, and I've been here 25 years. And in this neighborhood that Roy and Julia Villaronga, my friends, encouraged me to move into. And I'm fighting for that neighborhood. I want you to join me in the moral high ground and fight with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else put in for public comments on this item? Okay, public hearing is closed. Some things I want to address. First of all, regardless of the council for the residents of their home, regardless of how the council votes, it doesn't have anything to do with their mores, ethics, and values. how the council votes, it doesn't have anything to do with their mores, ethics, and values. That's just what they believe to be true, following the comprehensive plan and the recommendation from staff. Also, for the record, I do not believe that our staff is in collusion with anybody on anything. That's just so unethical, and I would never even say that about anyone. The third thing I want to address, Mr. Revel, could you please come up here? And this is about the notification, public hearing, that residents received it after the fact. Can you give me a timeline when that went out? And was it during the holiday? Because if it's during the holiday, could it be that Thanksgiving? I don't know what happened.
I don't know what happened either, Mayor. I would need to speak to the gentleman to make sure I'm clear on that concern. I don't know if it's related to planning and zoning. He's here tonight, so I would just have to follow up to make sure I'm understanding what he didn't get.
And one more question. The change that one of Mr. Rogers said, change today was not seen by the planning and zoning. Can you confirm that or deny that? What change was made today that planning and zoning did not see?
I'm not clear on that. I would need to get more clarification from what he's saying is the change.
So the slide deck that you presented today and went out to council for everybody to have the opportunity to see before this meeting, the planning and zoning, did they have the exact same slide deck?
In terms, I would say the possible only difference might have been related to the number of units that would be determined to be on that location. And so we presented tonight to the city council that the number of units would be limited to 30 units or 15 duplex units. We presented that tonight. Whether that was presented in clarity at the planning and zoning, that may be the difference. But again, I need to go back and double check that. That's the only thing I can think of. And I know that the engineer mentioned that they could do more than 15, but it's our understanding based on what we've seen so far that they would be limited to 15 duplex developments.
Okay. I know it's going to take a supermajority for the council to do it, so it wouldn't have them seeing that or not, it wouldn't have an effect on the vote because they voted it down.
Sure.
So it's not like they voted for and then didn't have opportunity to vote it down. The second thing is, is it legal for what happened? If it didn't go to planning and zoning, something transpired, then they changed the number of homes. Can we do that legally with that going before planning and zoning, going back to there?
We followed all the legal requirements. We presented what we needed to present, the planning and zoning.
Okay, Mr. Cagle.
Just to better answer that, we're confusing zoning with development standards. What Mr. Revel, the zoning is the zoning, two-family. What Mr. Revel was saying is the development standards, because there's only, the limited access would limit the amount of duplexes that could be built.
Correct. I understood that, but a resident come up here and make a statement and say that the council was in collusion and all that. I just want clarification.
Yes, ma'am, and I was trying to clarify that, that the zoning is different than the development standards. The development standards come after the property is
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Revel? Councilmember Adams?
Mr. Revel, I lost my train of thought. Give me, I'll come back, Madam Mayor.
And also for the record, it was only two council members on here, and that was council member Segarra and I. The other council members was not on here when that council made that decision. So it's not like you're accountable. We were the two that were sitting on the council. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll get you last because it's your district.
I have to be honest. I'm having difficulty understanding the challenges for this development. In other words, please qualify these safety issues because when I look at this, and if the map was pulled up, I see a creek to the east that separates the single-family. I see mobile homes to the south. I see a road to the west, and then a subdivision to the north. And in the inset, you have existing two-family. Where's the traffic challenge? I'm just trying to understand this, the safety issue.
So, yeah, I don't know any challenges associated with safety. I think in terms of access, if I could draw on here.
Sure.
Basically, in terms of, and that's supposed to be a diagonal from that point to that point, half of that distance, whatever it is, is how far there has to be between two access points.
Gotcha.
And so if you were to translate that distance over here, it would be off of the property, so to speak. So that's what we're saying, is the challenge to doing more than 15 duplex units is a far as Mr. Cagle said, it's not a zoning challenge, it's a planning-related challenge.
And this has been resolved by, I guess, the acquisition of another property, fronting Florence, to allow access.
Well, they have access, but again, there's going to be, two access points in order for those to qualify, it has to be half of that diagonal distance. They have to be that far distance apart, half of that. And if you do that on this property, it's hard to achieve that. It's just hard to achieve that distance.
I see. I see. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you. Mine was in line with the safety because I know that a citizen brought up safety concerns. One of the things, and I'm probably, again, jumping ahead, just like the city manager, because when it comes to like the width of the street for fire trucks and all that, that comes later, right?
Yes, sir.
So we don't have to worry about. But with that said, and somebody else brought up about high standards, and when it gets to that point, it has to conform to our architectural standards that we passed just a few months ago, which does increase the standards, you know?
Yes, sir.
You can't have duplexes all looking alike. They have to have certain, so that's all going to fall under there. So I mean, when it's all said and done, you're looking at about $400,000, because like I said earlier, that's what they're going for. And, but no, that's it, because I don't want to jump again. I know what we're talking about today, so.
And there's one other thing I'd like to say. I know there was mention about species on the property as any of that nature. And again, it's not a part of zoning, but as we, as our understanding of this site today, there are no threatened and endangered species on the property. There's a difference. One has a regulatory implication, the other does not.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I apologize everyone. My question was, so this already has zoning in place, so if this is not approved, what is allowed to be built there?
Yeah, it currently has R1 and the mobile home.
And then the mobile homes would still be allowed to be. So if the owner chooses to go ahead and build mobile homes, and because it's already zoned that way, it would still go through the planning process, I know, but is there any reason that we could say no to that?
No, this is about right.
Got it. My other question was, and I want to follow one of that, just, we've set the standards for you guys to follow, and developers complain about the standards because they're very I want to just restate again, based on those standards, what is the maximum number of houses, if I may, that can be built there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, maximum, maximum number of facilities per?
Yes, sir. So based on our understanding of the site, understanding of the limitations associated with that gross calculation I depicted, they would only be able to have 15 duplex units.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So I don't know if we go on second round. Okay, Mayor Proton.
So thank you. I'm not going to belabor the points that were made. I do appreciate the information that's been provided, and we're talking about zoning specifically. So the residential single-family to, and the residential mobile home to an R2 district. That's what we're talking about here. I just wanted to just make a statement. The gentleman in the back, that did speak, and I understand when these things come up because there's a lot that goes into it, and I know the phases that are involved in the process, but for the constituents' sake, I do share that sentiment. While we can't guarantee that the developer's going to develop the, we have our requirements that are in place, and they want to make sure there's going to be something nice, and they want to make sure it's going to be, you know, appeasable to their neighborhood and their future growth and everything else. So it would just be my hope that Quintero would continue to work with, or, you know, continue to work with the residents and just assure them as they're moving through the process, what those projects are going to look like and what they can expect from it.
Yes, ma'am.
Just out of general practice. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
I make a motion to approve PH 24-05.
I apologize, Mr. Councilmember Boyd. Standby. The public hearing was closed, but we got a form from a resident that wanted to speak. And I know during the public hearing phase that people can put in forms after, but I have to reopen the public hearing for that individual to speak. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes.
All right. Before we vote, we're just at late notice. I didn't see that coming, but it came. Late notice, we had another individual that would like to speak. I have to do public hearing open. Gary Purser, you have four minutes. Oh, there you go. You have to come up here, sir, if you want to speak. Do you want to speak or not?
On the next case, Mayor.
Okay. Public hearing closed. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Boyd, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to approve PH 24-050.
Councilmember Alvarez, I think you were the one there.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? I want to speak on 049. Please vote. Motion carries six in opposition. Councilman Solomon, motion passes. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready. Oh, Councilman Boyd, did you want, we already voted. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 24049. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by TCG Engineering on behalf of McLean Commercial Limited, case number Z 2429, to rezone approximately 87.44 acres out of the WH Coal Survey, abstract number 200, from A agricultural district to R1 single-family residential district. The subject property is generally located on the west side of Featherline Drive, west of the intersection of Mal Mason Road, Colleen, Texas. Requires a three-fourth majority vote. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 87.44 acres being part of the WH Coal Survey, abstract number 200, from A agricultural district to R1 single-family residential district, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Revel just went through the slides. Would you like for him to go back through them? All right. Is the applicant here? Sir, would you like to speak, or do you have a representative? All right, as you come, and sir, Mr. Purser, I'd like to apologize. I read your number wrong. I apologize for that. Sir, would you please state your name, and you have four minutes.
Garrett Nordike, TCG Engineering. I have 500 fires I need to put out tonight. I've been pretty quiet about this, the whole process. We've been going over this for six months now. Is it possible, since I'm representing the applicant, I understand that I'm not constrained by the same four minutes?
Sir, you do, is that correct, Madam City Attorney? Four minutes, correct?
The applicant isn't constrained by the four minutes.
Thank you.
You got your 500 fires.
Good evening, city council members. Madam Mayor, City Manager, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today about this land use request. During the last six months, we have discussed the capacity of existing infrastructure necessary to serve the requested use, consistency with surrounding land uses, compliance with Colleen's comprehensive plan, and build-out schedules. Thanks to your hard work, City of Colleen staff presentations, and the opposition's remarks, we are all very familiar with this project. And out of respect for your time, I will forego repeating a lot of the items that we have previously discussed. However, if you will bear with me for a moment, I do wish to discuss incorrect and misleading information that's been presented to residents, to the Colleen Planning and Zoning Commission, and to Colleen City Council. A petition with 500 signatures.
Sir, stand by. City Attorney?
I apologize. I had a misstatement. Your governing standards do have four minutes for the applicant. I apologize for that misstatement.
No problem. I just wanted to confirm with you, it's four minutes, sir.
So a petition was signed by 500 signatures, but understanding the incorrect and misleading information that was presented to both P&amp;Z and City Council, it's not hard to believe that the same incorrect information was presented to those who signed the petition. The top of the petition says, "We affirm we own property within 400 feet of this rezoning location. There are not 500 properties within 400 feet of this zoning location." That is an incorrect statement. It says, "The reasons for opposition and protest are as follow: lack of financial impact analysis." This is on the petition that was signed. This statement is incorrect. This project will have approximately $350,000 homes on lots 65 feet by 120 feet. This will be one of the most tax-dense subdivisions in the City of Colleen, 10 times more dense than the Llewellyn Ranchettes. It's another item. Item number two on the petition, lack of water supply. This statement is incorrect. Mr. Steve Kanye spoke to this at a previous city council meeting, met with residents claiming to have low water pressure, and refuted these claims. Further, he explained, "The proposed location is served by a different water system than those claiming to have water pressure problems." Item number three, the petition stated, "Lack of wastewater impact analysis." This statement is incorrect. Freezing Nichols periodically provides utility master plans that consider current demands, analyze Colleen's existing infrastructure, and facilitate with mapping out capital improvement projects. The subject site is served by two large wastewater interceptors. There's plenty of wastewater capacity. Item number four on the petition, it's missing recent FEMA-identified floodplain management impacts. Whether there's a floodplain on the property or not doesn't affect how we comply with City of Colleen's design regulations. As the mayor stated earlier, we are required to mitigate whatever runoff is produced by increasing impervious cover. We will have to have detention facilities, and we are not allowed to adversely impact downstream residents. The last item on the petition says that Featherline Road does not meet minor arterial requirements. This is true. The City of Colleen, we understand, has prioritized Featherline reconstruction, funded the project, and construction will begin in 2027. If the council approves the applicant's request tonight, it will take approximately one year to design the project, one to two years to construct the project, and another eight years before it's completely built out. That's on a fast schedule. So it will be three years before we have any residential traffic that's contributing loads to Featherline Road. How much time do I have? I will skip over most of the opposition document, Mr. Revel. Did an excellent job going through most of these points with compliance with the comprehensive plan. There was a lot of copy and pasting in this document saying that it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan because it doesn't adequately address pedestrian mobility, mixed use, sidewalks. These are all things that are considered during the design phase, not the land use phase. So he does not know what parks are being dedicated, what open space is being planned for, and what sidewalks are going to be constructed. I don't even know that. I'm the engineer. The City of Colleen does have design regulations that we have to comply with that address each of these issues, and that will be handled during the design phase of the project.
Sir, your time is up.
Can I have one minute?
Counsel.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please start the clock one minute.
At a town hall meeting, this is at the end of the opposition paper, there's a statement that says, "TCG Engineering confirmed at the town hall meeting that they are proposing to rezone the property immediately to the north of the subject property." This is no secret. This was part of the original request. And a new zoning application will be submitted. What he did not tell you is, the reason I spoke to him, I told him we're going to submit a new zoning request. We wish to be good neighbors. We want to work with you. Is there anything that we can do to work with you, saving trees along the fence line? saving trees along the fence line? Maybe having a, a lower density stretch of houses along the north property line that back up to your property? Anything that we can do to accommodate you and be good neighbors? He did not include that in the opposition. Lastly, the comprehensive plan has given direction to a lot of other entities, including KSD. Hundreds of millions of dollars have been invested in this area, anticipating that tax revenues would be generated by this property.
Sir, thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
We will now have the public hearing open. Michael Fornino. You have four minutes.
Over five hundred signatures. People who live in that immediate area, semantics is five hundred taxpayers don't live within that area. Those people are going to be directly affected. Eighty-four percent of the people who participated in the poll as published by the Colleen Daily Cat Box Letter, also, that's a majority. That's democracy in action. I personally don't care that the real person, as far as the applicant, wants this done. I know who he is. I know all of that. Smells a lot of this committee of twelve stuff. Anybody listening at home, look up the committee of twelve. It's in the paper. It's an article in 2010. People whose names are all up and down this hall have absolutely confirmed the existence of C-12 and what it does. Simple fact of the matter is, you may comply, meet, or exceed with any regulation, engineering survey. We're now at the precipice of who and what do you represent with your votes? The people don't want it. Doesn't matter what one person wants. A comment was made, "I represent forty thousand people." Well, that sounds dangerously close to that tired trope of, "Well, we've heard from other people." No, you haven't. The overwhelming majority of people who live in the general vicinity, who will be affected, don't want it. Comment was made, "Your money, your property, you can do what you want." Well, that's funny. That car dealership, I seem to recall the same council representative had a problem with a car dealership not too long ago and wanted it moved here, there, and everywhere around the town. So that's hypocrisy in motion. So who and what do you represent? How about you listen to the people? And we'll get ahead of, oh, well, this is an election year. Well, for the folks at home that are waking up, every year in Colleen is an election year. There's always half the council is up for grabs for the election. So it's not a stunt. It's not a trope from this side of the dais. The people don't want it. The people have stated clearly a whole host of reasons as to why they don't want it. Let's also consider, you're all practically drowning in your own saliva over how much money is going to be made on the front end with this project. Three hundred fifty thousand dollar houses? In a town where the average income is twenty-five thousand dollars? Because controlled growth for the last thirty-plus years, this town's only been growing one crop, single-family homes. You chased out Dell. It was the same bad idea. Forget the different faces up here. It's the same bad ideas. Chased out Dell, chased out Toyota, and God knows who else. The jobs and the income aren't here. So what's going to happen? Who's going to be able to afford those houses, possibly? Disabled veterans! You're not going to get the tax money on all this stuff. Look at the reality. And remind us all what most of you do for a living and how you make your money? Buying and selling houses. The benefit is to you, not to the residents who actually signed the petition and have a stake in the game. I mean, we're in a sea change here. This whole issue. You argue back and forth, the semantics, you know, the engineer who was just up here arguing his case. Yeah, he's got, he's got that right to do it. But the people, over five hundred signatures on that. When you consider that barely two thousand people on any given election come out to vote for the council? Consider the percentage of that as the voting public, and especially concentrated in that area. Tax density, this and that, doesn't matter. The people don't want it. That's democracy. How about you do what you're supposed to do? Represent the will of the people.
Melissa Brown, four minutes.
Mr. Nordike got six minutes and forty seconds because he got an extra amount of time before he started timing him. I don't expect citizens to be given that favor, just like we won't get to come up and rebut him a second time. But at the last meeting, I was called disrespectful for disagreeing with staff on whether or not this was within the comprehensive plan. But it's not disrespectful to tell a staff member to hurry up, "Don't give your full presentation. We don't feel like being here that long." It's also just plain disrespectful to say that it is ridiculous to think that this is not within the comprehensive plan. There can be a difference of opinion without it being a disrespect thing. Actually, respectfulness is being able to have that disagreement without coming up and insulting citizens. When we talk about, uh, needing money to sustain and pay for services, that means for properties that are receiving services. There are no services in the agricultural area except for one, possibly two dwellings. So no, we don't need the same level of money to sustain that area as we do a populated, developed area. I, I don't, I don't understand how that one keeps getting through. That is just ridiculous. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes are not affordable housing. The mayor keeps talking about how Fort Cabazos wants us to get more housing, but make it affordable housing so the soldiers and their families have a place to live. This is not it. When it comes to other services for development, the cost is front-loaded on existing residents. So when it comes to getting solid waste trucks, drivers, getting people to come out and read the meters, all of the other things that need to be done, these houses will not be putting into that until years after they have been moved into. Then they might start paying for themselves. Otherwise, the existing residents, the existing citizens are the ones front-loading the costs for all of this. We're paying for the roads. We're paying for the sidewalks. And though, even though, uh, Mr. Alvarez said sidewalks come with all subdivisions, um, we won't talk about how he was wrong about the sidewalks on Illinois. The city says, "We say, we hope, we plan." Obviously, these projects were planned before and have been done. Uh, have been done on schedule, which is why Featherline, Chapparrell, and Tremere are not done yet, correct? Because we've been saying it'll be done by now, done by now, done by now. Um, this is just another opening for the other half. The, the developer just admitted that, um, the city will have to pay for the rest of the extension out to Tremere, which is another two-lane county road with no shoulders, curbs, or sidewalks. If you respect the citizens, you would not ignore what their wishes are or insult them by saying, "We don't know what we're talking about." Or insult Walmart greeters, or say P and Z doesn't matter because they're just a bunch of citizens that are appointed by the council. Or by getting up and walking away when citizens come up to speak. We want to build, but can't help citizens that already live here make sure that their water is safe to drink. This is the priority, expanding, growing, but we can't make sure that children have safe drinking water. Good job. But I hope, I hope you vote for yes for this. One of you is already on the recall ballot in May. And approving this will make sure that the rest of you are replaced in May, and my next round of recalls are going to be a lot easier. So show us who you are.
Cameron Cochran. You, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember, oh, we can wait till you finish. Cam, uh, sir, you have four minutes.
Excellent. I want to give a history lesson. For those who weren't here last meeting, the mayor said that a young child touched her heart. That was at a, uh, town hall meeting at the police station back on August eighth. I met that young child. She attends Chapparrell High School. Her name is Alana. She's the president of the student council, and she attended this town hall meeting because she was concerned about Featherline and the infrastructure. She was saying that she had her own petition. She was getting students as well as teachers to sign it because they were afraid to drive on Featherline and it needed to be safe and secure. I guess you're going to break her heart, poor little Alana. You're going to vote to just stomp on her heart. Thanks, Mayor. Let's move on. The mayor and other city councils also at the last meeting said, "Trust the staff. Trust those experts." Mayor, remind you that that city's staff is using a floodplain map from FEMA dated 2008. They're using an thoroughfare infrastructure plan that's dated 2015. Must be nice to look at old documents and try to tell the city council, "Hey, you should approve this because I know if I flip a coin, I'll be correct." Rather than wait, the citizens are just asking for you to wait. But no, let's move on to top priorities. This city council loves top priorities. Look, look at some of those twenty, twenty-four top priorities. Well, the mayor, in her State of the City address, said the grocery store in the north part of the city was a top priority. We've been waiting for that since 2021. They said that Rosa Hartford, Bob Gilmore Community Center was a top priority. Well, that's behind schedule and over budget. They said code enforcement for the city.
Sir, could you please get back to the zoning item? It's a zoning, public hearing on zoning, uh, going down the grocery list. That's not it. It's on zoning.
Can I remind you that Texas Open Meeting Act says section five-five-one-point-zero-zero-seven?
Madam, City Attorney, it's on zoning.
A government body, I'm speaking! Hello?
No, I was talking to her before you.
No, I'm talking first. Shall allow?
Mr. Cochran.
Let me talk, please.
Madam Secretary, please stop the, um, clock. Is this not a zoning item, Madam Secretary? I mean, Madam Attorney.
How does she know it's in my mind?
Talking about what somebody, grocery store, all those items is not on zoning. This is just a zoning item.
You can enforce that whatever statements are made at the public hearing are related to the item.
And I stated that earlier to everyone. And let me repeat it again while the clock has stopped. Please stick to the zoning, the item on the agenda is a zoning item. Madam Secretary, you can start the clock.
So I guess let's move on, since the mayor can read my mind. She's avant. Uh, another point, the builders failed to have their initial request passed in May. They, it was disapproved by the commissioners, P and Z commissioners. They were on the board at that time. That time, Councilmember Alvarez made disparaging comments about the P and Z board saying that they need to be trained. They're basically not worth anything, and they don't know what they're doing. So then the mayor and the city council hand-selected new P and Z commissioners who also looked at this request and disapproved it based on some safety concerns, but I guess we want to gloss over that. Now it seems the builders are using loopholes to reintroduce construction of new homes in the area that's been told by them, by the city, by everyone, including the P and Z, "We don't want it. It should not be there." But they're going to use tonight to sway the vote. Let's look at some quotes we heard tonight. Timelines are matching up. Improvements are anticipated. I'd like to remind everyone that Councilman Segaro, back in 2014, said the same things. He was in the city council when the mayor said, "Look to my right, look to my left." None of us were here and were working to either approve or advance this. Well, we had one councilman at least was on the board. Forty-three seconds. Uh, I want to say, Nina Cobb, you're my District Three representative. I'm requesting, as a resident of District Three, do not vote for this to approve. Please disapprove this act. If you approve it, you lose my vote. Thank you.
Mr. Gary Purser Jr., you have four minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, can, can we pull up a couple of slides before my time starts? I want to talk about a couple of slides on this project.
Uh, no, sir, this is just public hearing. So we're just going to, just give you comments. Only staff could do that, and that had to be done. Uh, the applicant can do that, or staff.
Okay, well, let's go.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I'm just looking for some clarity. And, uh, I do want to say that I have heard from the city hall for years that y'all lose development. Y'all lose money on residential development. And I know y'all have heard, some of y'all have heard it. Maybe your new ones haven't, but y'all have heard that we lose money on residential developments. I've heard it. That's not what I heard tonight, which is wonderful because I always thought we made money on residential developments. And I know we make money. So I'm glad that that's off the table, maybe. But on the slide, and Mr. Segaro, or your mind works every now and then like mine. But, uh, when I, when I look at the slide up there, uh, Mr. Revel tells us that, you know, one thousand, fourteen hundred dollars, we lose money. Three thousand, we make money. Seven thousand, we make more money. That's, that makes sense to me. And then I see the slide that says, "For every house that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're making three thousand dollars per, for that." I don't know, and I'm looking for clarity. I don't know if that, could we do, you brought the question up. We get three to four lots per acre. So are we, are we making three or four times that much money? Or we're just getting the revenue on one house? And the way I looked at it was one house. But there's more than one house per acre. The chart showed per acre. So I don't know what the clarity is there. And if any of y'all can tell me, I'd be glad to. But I, I do know one thing, we make money. Uh, we wouldn't have the budget we got, and we wouldn't have the city we got. But I don't know by that slide. I just don't know. And, and I'd ask any of y'all if y'all could tell me. Mr. Revel could tell me. And it doesn't really matter. It's just, I do not see what, I can't follow that. And Mr. Segaro couldn't follow that either because he asked the question, "Is it per acre? Or is it per house? Per, any houses per acre? What is, what is it?" I don't know. I don't know that anybody in this room knows right now. So I just wanted to bring that. And also, I've heard on the last two cases, comprehensive plan, future land use map, comprehensive plan, we're following comprehensive plan. That is going to come to be an issue in the future. Because sometimes, I guess we follow it, sometimes we don't. Don't you even start.
Mr. Purser, are you getting, you're on a thin line and not being on the agenda, and I'm just ready when you get on.
You're taking up my time. Don't even pick that gavel up. But we heard comprehensive plan over and over tonight. And I don't know that it's going to be an issue that, that I've tried to communicate with some of the city council with not much success yet, that, that they don't want to talk about it. But I've got some big issues coming up with the comprehensive plan. And this comprehensive plan they're going with tonight, the same one. So, okay, I just, I would just, I, I'm not here to argue. I'm not here. I just didn't know about the slide. I don't know that we know about the slide. And I do know that I'm glad to hear that we're making money because I have heard we lose resi, we lose money on residential, and I know that we don't. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price. Sir, you have four minutes.
City Council.
Sir.
With respect to this property, uh, from my understanding, from the zoning of this, this is going to be right next to the Bess, right? That was already adopted and approved, right? So we're going to have this battery storage system sitting out there next to all these new homes, right? But, buttressed right up against it. Or are we going to have any cyanide gas sirens? Like carbon monoxide detectors? Because when these, when these lithium battle, uh, sixty thousand pound lithium battery storage units catch fire, they emit cyanide gas. Now, the, the chief, the fire, the chief will say that it's not such a big danger because it's contained, but it does emit gas. They do open it up, and that cyanide gas does come out and blow. Well, is it going to blow into, uh, how close are these houses going to be next to this? Is that part of this zoning program? Was that part of this zoning? That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at is because I don't see that that's part of this, this, this hazmat situation for this property right next to this that's already been approved by the city. So I, I'm just a little confused. Why wasn't that part of the discussion on the zoning, for zoning it next to a hazmat area? The other thing is, is that, um, why is it that we always get to these zoning issues in the infrastructure for the, uh, for these developing areas, right? Any area that we develop, we don't have the infrastructure in place Any area that we develop, we don't have the infrastructure in place, other than the pipes, right? The road system isn't there, right? You don't have the roadway to get into it, and that's always an issue. And we have issues with Chaparral and Featherline on the zoning for this, for the access to the, to this property, right? That's already part of the whole issue, right? We're talking about the safety of the property going, you know, for the zoning and everything like that for this actual property. And I just don't see that it's, it's beneficial to everyone that lives out there, right? And that there's a risk that's not being evaluated for the, for this property underneath the zoning considerations. That's just my spiel on it, right? Otherwise, I would say, no, this needs to be looked at in a different, different aspect. There's a lot more to the zoning of this property than what is on the surface here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leo Gukeisen.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Well, you was going backwards and forth with Ben on the topic often, you switched before I could get you, but yeah, you did a good job. You, good job, good job, you stayed on topic. Hey, sir, how are you? Yes, sir. How are you doing, sir?
Doing good, ma'am.
All right, you have four minutes.
Right, thank you. I want to start with a quote from Patrick Henry that was delivered before the Virginia Convention on March 23, 1775, excuse me. It states that "I shall speak forth my sentiments freely and without reverse," or reserve, excuse me. Can't read my own handwriting. This matter has been going around the circle for a long time now, and both sides have stated their opposition or for it or whatever, but I'm going to try and keep it low-key and stay on topic. When this item first came up in front of the P&amp;Z, as a member of the P&amp;Z, and after considering the whole facts, I was one of the ones who voted against this item. And today I stand on my decision to vote against this item. As a citizen of this city, I did sign the petition opposing this item based upon the information at hand that I knew of from the city count, from the planning and zoning. And I do take, to the point where an outside individual states up here that the Planning and Zoning Commission did not know what they were doing when they disapproved this. We looked at the evidence and we disapproved it, bottom lineup. And a new Planning and Zoning Commission also disapproved the same thing, even after the planner, engineer, whatever, sat with the city staff and came up so they could use the loophole that's in the system. Because their plan is to build this and also to build the other half, so they're getting what they want. Now, a lot of folks have come up here, and you're probably hearing a lot of this over and over again, but that should be something to your train of thought on how you're going to vote on this. A few years ago, in 2022, there was a petition referred to as Prop. A, that this city council stated the need to follow the will of the people. You approved, you disapproved it, but you had a go-to vote. Unfortunately, it passed, and then you approved it as an ordinance, which is in violation of state law, but we're not going to go there because that's a different topic. So what I'm saying is, what is the difference between that petition and the petition signed by the 530 people? The will of the people have spoke. You said you have to follow the will of the people. Are you going to go back on your word of following the will of the people? It's on topic, ma'am.
I'm looking at the city attorney, she gave me the look that it's not, so please get back to zoning.
The petition is part of this, was part of the discussion, so it could be part of my discussion. Everybody else brought up the petition, why can I not? And why are you saying now that it was wrong, but you let them do it? You know, this is the problem that we have, Madam Mayor, I'm going to weigh my 41 seconds. The will of the people, you said it, this body said it. Are you going to go back on it or not? Thank you.
Mr. Scott Cosper. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. It's an honor to be here in front of you, and I want to thank you for your service to our community and enduring what you have to do to do the business of the city and to move the city forward. I am here as an adjoining property owner. I own 110 acres north of this project. We have almost a half a mile of adjoining property lines, it's a little over 2,500 square feet. I want to speak in support of the project, but I also want to speak in support of the city staff and the city council. When the original request came forward, we were trying to show that we were cooperating with each other on connectivity, on drainage, on extending the Collector Malmason, or however you say that, that street name. And we brought it forward with what we thought was the best option for the city, what the comp plan shows. So as a result of that, there was opposition that came forward, and there was all of this misinformation, a false narrative, but no one knew that. It was put out there, it was shared with everyone that there's drainage issues, there's water, there's sewer, everything that could be made up was made up. But there was one issue, and staff went back after it was turned down originally, they doubled down, and they went back and they reconfirmed that those issues were invalid. But there was one issue that was valid, it was about the traffic. And I commend the city council, y'all had a town hall meeting at the police station, Bell County Commissioners Court had a town hall meeting, staff from both organizations were there, they listened to the people. When the issue about the intersection at Featherline came up, staff responded expeditiously. Mr. Kagle had a right turn lane installed almost immediately. That, that reduces.
I apologize. Ms. Brown, that was your second warning, please get your belongings and leave the meeting and leave the premises. Mr. Cosper, I apologize for you have the, for that interruption, because it was, it was not right. So you have the floor, you have two minutes and five minutes.
So I'll wrap up quickly, but I just wanted to say that the city responded very quickly, installed the right turn lane, striped it.
Sir, please pause. Madam Secretary, Ms. Brown, I have asked you to leave the meeting and take your belongings with, please, Ms. Brown, let's not please anymore, get your belongings, leave the meeting, and leave the premises now. We're taking a five-minute break. That's online, and one sits here, and staff, and council, I apologize for that, but that was a second warning I had already put out. Mr. Cosper, I apologize, you have the floor, you have one minute and 58 seconds.
Okay, well, thank you, I'm sorry for that, and I tried to pick up where I left off, but the point I was trying to make is, y'all did the right thing, planning and zoning did the right thing. You listened to the people, you let them voice their concerns, they did voice their concerns. You went back and you did your due diligence, you had, you told staff, go make sure that this is this way or that way. And the ones that, the ones that were unfounded, you pushed them aside, as I think you should have, but the ones that were valid, you addressed them immediately. I have never seen government work so effectively and efficiently as y'all have on this issue. You've put the right turn lane in, the county has installed the stop signs, the county is in the process of engineering the signalized intersection there, you've hired a design engineer for the improvements of the roadway, and you've approved a funding mechanism for it. What more could anybody ask of you? Instead of standing up here and criticizing y'all and talking the way people have been talking to you, they ought to be giving you a standing ovation, because...
Sir, I apologize. Mr. Leo Gukeisen, that's your first warning for disrupting the meeting when someone is speaking. You want respect, we have to show it. Sir, I apologize for that being disrespectful.
So I...
Mr. Gukeisen, that's your, no, I only have to put you out, you know the lead. Thank you, have a good night, too. I apologize for that. Okay, sir, you can continue.
Thank you. So what I want to wrap up with is that the county and the city have been very responsive to the whole situation. You have professional staff that you recruit and retain attorneys, engineers, planning experts, the county has engineers and planning experts, all of them have engaged this, and all of them have said, other than the intersection and the future need of widening the road, there are no issues. And you have addressed both of those, and I think 2027 was thrown out about a construction start date, and I think Mr. Revell said that if the design can come sooner, it will probably happen sooner. So with that, I want to applaud you, I just want to say I support my neighbor and his request, and I appreciate what y'all do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., do you want to speak now? Okay. Mr. Seals, so you have four minutes.
I just need to clarify before I start my speech. One, I submitted the opposition petition and packet to Mr. Kagle and the staff to upload to this agenda packet, and he refused. He called me an outsider, and he would not append that information. So the petition that Mr. Nordike is speaking of is the original P&amp;Z petition, not the 530 signature petition that I submitted to this council well in advance of this meeting. So that's why he doesn't know about that one. And again, I have the email from Mr. Kagle this morning, he said that he does not allow outsider information, which I'm a citizen of this city.
Okay, sir.
Second, I have nothing against Mr. Nordike, Mr. Cosper, I'm not against development, right? He is correct, he is trying to be a good neighbor. I've never discredited him, this project, or anything. My stance is simply on safety. It's been that way from the start, okay? So, you know, people, council members, others can try to publicly discredit me, say it's misleading, look at the packet, it's screenshots, copy paste from your materials, not my own. Now, I've cleared that up, I'm sorry. So Featherline is not safe. There were 32 accidents last year. The average daily traffic has grown 38% since 2022, and is now over 11,000 vehicles per day. That number has increased this year. The city recently added two more ingress egress points, brings that total to 11, they're all left-turn conflicts. In the past three years, the police have lost four vehicles to accidents, three on Featherline, one at the Stagecoach and Featherline intersection. Based on the slides today from the city, please hear this out. Featherline design will take two years, construction of road improvements will be in 2027. If the applicant's request is approved, design and construction of the subdivision improvements will also take two years. So I ask, will subdivision development using large 18-wheeler vehicles, flatbed trucks, major construction vehicles, concrete trucks, contractor trade vehicles, et cetera, flowing in and out of Featherline, take place in its current two-lane county road state? Or will the development with all the same major...
Sir, I'm not meaning to cut you off, but this is a rezoning item, it's not development. We haven't even got to that. We're voting to rezone it to be there or not? We're not voting on what they can build there, how many trucks, that's developments is totally different than rezoning.
This is about the safety of both happening, the development along with the construction of Featherline. Or will the development with all the same major construction vehicles take place simultaneously to Featherline reconstruction? Either scenario significantly increases the risk of traffic-related accidents in this area. How will that even be remotely safe to the citizens that live there? Are you going to divert traffic to East Tremere, which is a two-lane road? Or perhaps Tremere Road, which is also a two-lane road? Or Chaparral, you guessed it, is also a two-lane road? Why would you ask or add this unnecessary risk of development to residents right now, when you have Featherline in the hopper to be reconstructed? Substantial need. I've talked about this a lot, but I just want to bring up a few points. This, since 1960, the city has expanded its infrastructure by 1,100%, while the population has only grown 650%. On Sunday, it stated Colleen's growth was 5.5% or 8,400 since 2020. That is far less than the need of 3,000 homes per year that the staff says you need in this area. That's 12,000 homes in a year. Colleen has only sold 3,000 homes one time since 2011. Now is the actual time to shift the market to existing housing, like the comp plan says How is this rezoning need before road infrastructure can be put in place? How is this a need before the city can put forth? Can I have one extra minute, please?
Madam City Attorney, is that on topic or off topic? I'm trying to get clarification since time is up.
I believe it's on topic.
Okay. Mr. Kagle. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, what did you say?
I asked for another minute, please.
Yes, sir, one minute. Madam Secretary, please start the clock again.
How is this rezoning a need before road infrastructure can be put in place? How is this a need before the city can put forth a compliant, complete neighborhood and a project that is inclusive and diverse? Lastly, how can a single landowner's rights be more important than the thousands of residents for a safe neighborhood, safe streets, and their general welfare? The justification to disapprove this rezoning has been provided to you all day. We're so close, you have the chance to do the right things for the residents today. We've been waiting for this road to be reconstructed for 10 years, since 2014, to support this area, and we're right here, you're going to start building it. Just push this zoning off until that road is constructed. That's what we're asking. It is not safe to do both reconstruction efforts at the same time, and the city is stating that that's what's going to happen. They're both going to take place in the next two to three years. Don't add that unnecessary risk to this zoning.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Kagle.
I just want to clear the record, I did not call Mr. Seals a name, I'll read you my response. We do not add outside information to the packet, you're free to email the information to anyone or hand out at the meeting.
Thank you for the clarity. And our last speaker is Mr. Gary, Gary, Garrett Nordike?
Garrett Nordike, thank you.
Hey, sir, I apologize, sir, you have four minutes.
This has been a really unique project for me, I've been doing development for about 20 years now, and it's not very often that I work on a project where almost all the infrastructure is in place. Usually, these conversations are about upgrading off-site wastewater, off-site water facilities, upgrading a lot of off-site facilities. But tonight, the only thing that we have to talk about is Featherline, and you guys have already addressed that issue. Something that hasn't been talked about is the high school on Chaparral, Chaparral High School. The service area extends to the west, it serves areas on the south and north side of Stagecoach Road. So anyone that's traveling to Chaparral High School is most likely traveling down Stagecoach Road and then turning to go down Featherline Road. When this project is built out in 10 years and as other projects are built out, it's likely that KISD will change their district areas and traffic will be further reduced. There are some growing pains, I understand, I get it, we've all been through it, but there are growing pains, and in the end, I commend you guys for, for thinking ahead, not just you guys, but I was going through like the history of the Colleen Police Department Headquarters, KISD's bond elections, they sold 400-something million dollars in bonds, bought 225 million dollars in schools in the area, all anticipating growth in this area. And this is, this is one of the best areas to develop, these two tracts of land. There's some other, but you start going further south, we get into topography, we go west, we get into Fort Hood, we go east, we get into Harker Heights. Density is something that you guys need to generate tax revenues, and this will be one of the highest grossing tax subdivisions in the city. This will help service the debt for the bonds that were sold to pay for all the infrastructure for the last 20 years. I yield back the balance of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed, and I... Public hearing is closed, and I just want to make two clarifications. One, the mayor does not vote on this item tonight. It was stated that I do, but I don't. And two, the young lady that was stated about this item on the agenda, she was not at a town hall meeting. It was Mr. Seals who mentioned the petition while he was being, speaking during citizen comment. With that being said, Councilmember Alvarez, and then Councilmember Cobb, and then Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Zagers is here. I, I wanted to clarify something for the public, even though there's not much left here, but the ones watching on TV or online. Featherline in its current state, current condition, according to conversation we had and your professional opinion, can handle the traffic from this proposed development the way that it is today?
Correct. The, a two-lane road can handle anywhere between 750 and 900 cars an hour. And so, you know, spread that out 24 hours a day, hit the peak hours. The road can handle the capacity of the vehicles that are out there.
Okay. And that's what, you know, the constituents that I've spoken to, it's something that I've tried to clarify to them. And I understand, like I said, I drive the road every day. I understand people's perceptions and, and how they view the road. And at the end of the day, again, something that I've, I've been trying to repeat, maybe fallen on deaf ears, but we're not the experts. P&amp;Z is not the experts. The experts are the folks that we have on staff who have sacrificed their time to these specific professions. And that's who, you know, we have to rely on that, on that, their professional recommendation. Otherwise, why do we have them here if we're not going to listen to what they say? And I can, and I understand the lay perception is that the road cannot handle the traffic, it's going to be terrible, and is, is it going to inconvenience people? Probably. As human beings, we're inherently selfish. So I'm, I'm in one of those categories myself. I don't like to wait in traffic. But I can tell you that I specifically have timed my route to and back from Chaparral High School, documented on the dash cam of my car, and the max that I've ever waited in that intersection is about 12 minutes. And to me, that's not terrible. Obviously, if you're running behind, 12 minutes is 12 minutes. But the way that I hear some folks talk about this area, it would make me think that they're waiting hours to get through this traffic, which is absolutely not true. So I wanted to put that out there into the universe, that the road in its current condition can handle the traffic for the proposed development the way that it is. And this council has prioritized the improvement of that road to a three-lane road with sidewalks and lighting, like you guys have stated earlier, because we see the growth. If the growth is not going to happen, and we were to say, well, this area, we're not going to let anything be built here, then we can take that $12 million for Featherline and use it somewhere else because you don't need it. The road can currently handle the traffic that way that it is. The kids have a safe route to walk through Chaparral High School through the neighborhood. So, you know, I understand, but we also have to not be dismissive of, of the professional recommendations that we have from our experts on staff. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cobb.
As we go to the end of our evening, again, weeks, months, have we listened? I have listened to everyone. I have read packages. I have jumped up and down, got on four-wheelers, went on land. I have called so many people in reference to Featherline. My decision that I will make tonight will not be based on the likeness of a vote. You know, I want it to be made real clear. My, to be just, to be fair, to be honest, to be safe, no matter where it comes in this, this big picture, I am for that. I am for people being safe. But I, I want to tell you something else that matters to me. And it's something, you know, I'm a country girl, so there's a whole lot of country stuff, and the mayor's going, give me the gavel in a minute. But pause tells me in my readings and the things that I have to stand firm. I'm going to ask the community, I'm going to ask the constituents to stand firm. We have to be courageous. We have to see those things go and build and to see our city grow. I'm not a big development person, but I believe that our city, it is the time for our city to grow. But most important, what I do believe in is that when we're neighborly, then we understand. We, I said no because I didn't understand it. Don't ever forget, with all thy under, with all thy learning, we have to have an understanding. We've heard you. I respect each and every one of you, your time, your efforts. But it's now time that we have to stand firm, be courageous, and be upstream.
Do any other council member want to speak other than Councilmember Boyd? All right, council, before Councilmembers, Board speak, I just want you to understand that you have to have the majority vote. I mean, if two individuals, you need six votes. That's all I can say on that. You need six. I'm not persuading you one way or another, but once the votes are, you're going to make sure your equipment is working because I'm not going back early. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to speak clearly. I'm going to speak as a leader. I'm up for reelection next year, and I ran unopposed last year. So I'm going to be clear. In my personal opinion, as a city leader, this issue has received way more attention than it should have compared, and make sure you quote this correct, to the newspaper, to other looming issues we have in this city. I want to make sure that's clear. We talk about the will of the people, and I 100% respect the will of the people, but there are times when the will of the people are lied to and when they are given misinformation and convinced and compelled to sign a petition, similar to my recall. When we had that conversation, not one person to sign it showed up, but I'm going to get back on the agenda. It is now 7:49, and it makes me a little uncomfortable that we have a couple individuals who claim to represent hundreds, but none of those hundreds are here to reinforce the signature that was put behind it. That point, it was mentioned, mischaracterized, outsider. We just got clarity from a verbatim email that said outside information. It's easy to go out and collect signatures for folks who hear about an idea and feel some type of way about it. I've witnessed it myself, and I'm not going to repeat myself. I'm going to get to these remarks. That's going to be it. In evaluating, considering this case, I have noted the following. These are facts that we work with or that I work with as a city leader. The first one, the city looked into the water pressure issue.
Councilmember Boyd, stand by.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, am I hearing people out there? If so, that is a disruption. So somebody needs to be out there controlling that. We shouldn't hear it all the way in here.
Councilmember Boyd speaking. It's disruption. How about that? I'm kidding.
Councilmember Boyd, I apologize for that. The floor is yours.
That's okay. Back to the facts here that I've taken into consideration. The city looked into the water pressure issue, which was put forward, and deemed the water pressure issue meets or exceeds standards. That's a fact. City halls were held by district council member for District Two and District Three. The citizens were heard. That was an expectation. That occurred. The city of Colleen constructed a right turn lane at the intersection of Featherline Road proactively in response to the citizens' concerns. Bell County established the stop sign at the intersection of Featherline and Chaparral Road in response to the citizens' concerns. The city council ultimately approved a CO bond issue to fully redesign and reconstruct Featherline Road. That's what the citizens asked for with sidewalks. It is approved and is funded. You're getting exactly, let me clear that up. The citizens are getting exactly what they requested. It's coming. It may not be on the timeline like mentioned before, but it's coming. The mayor's trying to drill it down so we can get a guaranteed timeline. I had issues with Bunny Trail Water Crest for the past three years. This is going to get fast-tracked. This is good. But the, the fact of the matter is what you asked for initially, you're, the citizens will be getting. City staff, the professionals we responsibly rely on.
Councilmember Boyd.
I like to request.
That's your first three minutes. Do, no one else speak? Before I go back to, Councilmember Boyd, you have three more minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City staff, the professionals we responsibly rely on, responsibly rely on, responsibly rely on, recommended approval of this case. Staff determined a traffic impact analysis will be required for this case, and it's determined that the development is in compliance with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan according to our Executive Director of Planning and Development. And this is an urban-focused, people-focused development that is fiscally responsible. As a city leader, with this information, it's responsible of me to take this into account and also take into account that the will of the people can be lied to. Seen it, experienced it. Again, where are the 500 people here tonight to reinforce? Not to say that what they did wasn't, wasn't wise, trusting someone else, but there's times when you say, hey, look, I really believe in this. I'm here to really show. I'm going to get to the point. I make a motion to approve, I make a motion to approve PH 24-049. Thank you.
Mayor, I second that motion.
All right, before we vote on this, anything else that need to be clarified, anything else that need to be said? All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Somebody missing?
That's zero.
Oh. Oh, sorry about that. The, the motion carries seven to zero. Counsel, during, to the time, I would like to, speaking, Mr. Cagle speaking to me, to postpone DS 24-073, conduct annual evaluation of the city manager, to move it, he wants to move it to next week, if that's okay with you. Okay, can, we get a motion of direction to move DS-24-073, conduct annual evaluation of the city manager for not this week, but next week. Councilmember Proton.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make-
I'm going to date.
Oh. I didn't have-
10.
10.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to push back DS 24-073, conduct annual evaluation of city manager to December 10th.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Adams.
Yes, I second the motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. I think everything went off up there. Motion carries seven to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Sagawa. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. There you have it. Meeting adjourned.